Good evening, everybody. And... Good evening, everybody. We will go ahead, thank you. Um, we are going to go ahead and get started for the Monroe County Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025, and the time is 5:04. And so here in the Nat U Hill Room, we have councilors to my right here. Councilors David Henry, Peter Iverson, Kate Wiltz, and Liz Fidel. And joining us virtually, we have Councilmember Decker that is online as well. I'm not seeing Counselor Marty Hawk here just yet, but we will make sure to announce, whether she shows up virtually or in person as well. So we have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and get started. And all those that are able to stand, please stand with us to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, for which it stands, one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Great, thank you. Next up is the adoption of tonight's agenda. We all got the packet and we all have the agenda here in front of us. Is there anyone that would like to make an amendment to tonight's agenda? So, because we have a member that is virtually, we will have to do a roll call to vote to approve tonight's agenda. May we please have a roll call vote? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Next up is the first time in a very long time that the Nat U Hill Room has quite a few guests here, and we welcome all y'all. Thank y'all very much for coming. And so that is the other part that is up next is the public comment. So for items that are not on today's agenda, each member, whether you are on teams or coming forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room, will have up to three minutes. We will definitely stand by the three minutes. So if you are done and three minutes are over, politely take your seat and allow the next person to come up. And so again, if you would like to make a comment, you'll sign in here at the podium over here. And then if you are wanting to make a comment on teams, I will acknowledge you, but you will need to raise your hand first. So I will go ahead and start off. I'll start off with two members here and the public here in the Nat U Hill Room. And then after that, I will alternate back and forth between teams and here in the lectern here. So whoever would like to go first here in the Nat U Hill Room, please go ahead. And again, monitors are here to show you that you have up to three minutes. Yes and yes, please state your name for the record. And before we start with public comment, we have just had Counselor Marty Hawk arrive in the Nat U Hill Room. So welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Seth Mutchler. I'm resident of Monroe County and a member of Care Not Cages. We are excited today to announce a new coalition of 12 local organizations that are all calling upon Monroe County to invest in expanded housing, mental health care, food security, and substance use treatment in the community instead of funding a $230-plus million jail. In April of this year, New Leaf New Life published a position statement on this topic. Since then, 11 organizations have signed on as endorsing this statement with more to come. They have endorsed the statement because even though it speaks specifically about New Leaf New Life, they stand behind its message that our community is better served by social services than by incarceration. This is not a niche belief. This is a belief held by many people working in the social services and social support field. This is a belief held by many people who have lived experience of incarceration or who have been affected by the carceral system, by the incarceration of loved ones, or who interact with people every day who say jail doesn't work, but services do. Present today to read the position statement to the council and to the public is Stacy Flynn, New Leaf New Life's executive director. We will then have representatives from a number of the endorsing organizations who will share a bit more about the essential work that they do and the further impact that increased funding would allow their organizations to have on the entire Monroe County community. So I'd like to welcome to the podium Stacy Flynn and members of the Coalition in support of the message.
Thank you. Thank you, Seth. State your name for the record, and then you will have up to three minutes here. We'll have TSD reset the clock back to three minutes. There you go.
Thank you. My name is Stacy Flynn, and I am the Director of New Leaf New Life. And I would like to read and present to you our latest position statement on a new jail for you this evening. New Leaf New Life remains opposed to the construction of a new jail facility in Monroe County. As an organization with over 15 years of direct service experience, working alongside incarcerated and formerly incarcerated individuals in our community, we know that true public safety comes from investment in people, not larger jail facilities. Despite ongoing discussions about potential locations and the rising estimated cost of a new jail, now exceeding $200 million compared with the $62 million cost to renovate the current facility, we believe these resources would be better invested in expanding housing, mental health care, and substance use treatment in the community. Evidence-based research has proven that new jails do not solve systemic issues driving incarceration in our area, including poverty, lack of affordable housing, and untreated mental health or substance use disorders. Monroe County's own data shows most people in the jail are held pre-trial, often for low-level offenses or simply because they cannot afford bail. Expanding the jail will not reduce recidivism or improve community safety, but investing in services like ours does. New Leaf New Life provides effective, low-cost support that helps people stay out of jail and successfully re-enter the community. Our re-entry mentorship program participants currently demonstrate a lower percentage of recidivism at 14.8% compared with the Indiana Department of Corrections Monroe County rate at 29.2%. We urge county leaders to prioritize repairing the existing jail to meet constitutional standards while committing, committed remaining resources to evidence-based alternatives to incarceration. Building a larger, more expensive facility in a remote location is fiscally irresponsible, socially harmful, and out of step with the community's values. For more about our work and impact, you may visit newleafnewlife.org. And I really appreciate being able to be here and give a public comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, since we have the two already here for public comment, I want to look at, I don't see any hands raised on teams, but again, if you are on teams and you would like to make a public comment, go ahead and raise your hand. Until then, well, looks like we just got somebody. So again, if you are on teams, please state your name and make a public comment, and you have up to two minutes. Or I'm sorry, three minutes. I saw that. And you can go ahead and unmute. Are you able to unmute? Okay. So while we're working on the personal line, which it looks like the screen name says Ken Falk, we'll come back to you virtually, but now we'll go back to, just to kind of keep up with everything, we'll come back to the Nat U Hill Room again, state your name, and you have up to three minutes.
My voice is kind of in and out, so I apologize. My name is Tracy. I'm the Assistant Director for Pantry 279. I want to start by listing the names of other organizations that are endorsing the New Leaf New Life outlook on this jail. Care Not Cages, Care Not Cuffs Hoosier Action Chapter, Courage to Change Sober Living, Democratic Socialists of America Bloomington Chapter, Exodus Refugee Immigration Incorporated, the Indiana Recovery Alliance, Dr. Jeremy Voiles, Ph.D., Monroe County, N O W, Mother Hubbard's Cupboard, Opportunity House, and Pantry 279. I want to talk a little bit about Pantry 279's specific involvement and what we have seen within this community. We are serving right now almost 10,000 clients a month. That is drastically more than we have ever seen. Resources are lower than they have ever been within this community. We run on a less than 500K a year budget. Within those people that we are serving in this community, we have now taken on Courage to Change, Sober Living, Kinzer Flats Sober Living, Malibu House Sober Living. I want to share with you a story that we got from one of those houses. We started delivering on a bi-weekly basis to them about three months ago. They came to us to let us know that there's no longer violence inside the houses because people aren't assaulting each other over lack of resources and lack of food. You know, helping these people get back on their feet and trying to provide what they need without making it so much harder for them to get a leg up, even just supplying a little bit of groceries every week is enough for them to be able to pay their rent and, you know, stay off the streets and try and make a better life. Another thing that we are lacking severely within this community is access to resources for mental health issues. And I have seen a lot of incarcerations result because there just isn't enough resources for mental health problems within this community. I'm not going to take any more of your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I am going to go back again to teams. Are you, looks like you are unmuted, Mr. Falk. You have up to three minutes, and you can go ahead with your public comment.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. My name's Ken Falk. I'm the Legal Director of the ACLU of Indiana. I am the lawyer who brought the lawsuit back in 2008, challenging the constitutional conditions at the jail. I'm from the ACLU. We are not necessarily a fan of putting people in jail, but we are a fan of constitutional standards. The existing jail simply cannot be rehabbed to meet constitutional standards. Every single person who has examined the jail, the sheriffs in the jail, you yourselves recognize that. You need a new jail. It's been almost 20 years since we filed our litigation. It's been almost 20 years since everyone agreed that the conditions in the jail violated the Eighth Amendment. This jail is way past its useful life. You all commissioned a study back in 2021 that said, quote, "The jail facility is incapable of ensuring and sustaining constitutional levels of inmate security." I respect the efforts of everyone and the need to avoid excessive incarceration, but you need a new jail. And studying and re-studying it and approaching it from a thousand different angles is not going to solve the problem. You, the county, you are facing liability. You are holding people in a jail that is sorely inadequate. And that if something happens in that jail, you've been put on notice that the jail is deficient. I am not a jail expert, but I have litigated many of these cases. And there are ways to build new facilities that incorporate current standards, that allow for treatment space, that allow for ways of dealing with the high percentage of persons who are incarcerated, who are mentally ill, and have substance abuse problems. But you can't do it in the facility that you have now. And you simply cannot pour money into something that is inadequate, whether it holds one person, 100 people, or 300 people. That facility simply is inadequate, and it's been recognized as such. You have spent an enormous amount of money on experts who told you that. And I think the time has come, and we did make progress. We reported to the court last year that the county was going ahead to build a new jail. And I think it's time to continue those efforts to get it done because right now you have a jail that has long exceeded its useful life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll come to the next public commenter here in the Nat U Hill Room. Again, sign in and state your name.
Hello, my name is Andrew Hodges. I am an IU student. I work at Pantry 279 over in Ellisville. And I am the Secretary of the Local Chapter of the National Organization for Women. I'm here to talk about the issue of the jail and that as a feminist organization, we do not believe that funding this jail corresponds with our values. We believe in the core issues of ending violence and of economic justice, and we do not believe that spending this amount of money will end violence in our community or be just. We believe that supporting social services and devoting this funding, at least some of it, to social services will be a much better use of the money. I think a lot about how young people are in this community. And I know that leaders such as yourselves have said that it's a goal to retain young people in this community, but they won't stay unless there's housing and jobs. And to spend such a vast amount of money on this project, I think, goes against that goal. I think that there are young people like me who come here, and they love it, and they want to care for the community like I have. But I can't stay here if I get paid $10 an hour at a food pantry. And so I think that there are much better uses for our money. And I think, you know, we've gone on this long search for a location for the jail, but our community knows where we can end violence, and that is on Washington Street, at the Rise New Wings, that is on Kirkwood, and the churches that house homeless in the winter. And that is in Ellisville between El Ranchero and Urban Air, at a pantry that feeds many, many of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking to teams to see if anybody has their hands up. Don't see any, so I will go ahead and go with the next speaker here. Again, come forward to the lectern and state your name, sign in, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Justin Booth, and I'm the Men's House.
With a mic down, so sorry.
Hello, my name is Justin Booth. I'm the Men's House and Case Manager for Courage to Change. We are in full support of New Leaf and New Life's statement today. That's all I got.
Thank you. We're not seeing any on teams, so go to the next person here in the Nat U Hill Room.
Hi, everybody. My name is Erin Aquino, and I'm the Director of Exodus Refugee here in Bloomington. We're an independent nonprofit refugee resettlement agency. We've operated in Bloomington since October 2021, and we started by welcoming the first Afghan refugees that fled during the Afghan evacuation in August 2021. Since our inception, we've welcomed close to 500 refugees from over 20 different countries. If you don't know, refugees are people who have fled their country based off persecution of race, nationality, religion, membership of a social group, or political opinion, and they're unable to return to their home country for fear of death or retaliation. Whether we are working with asylum seekers, parolees, or refugees, they are all immigrants of humanitarian concern. In short, they are people who need safe places to live. They're not coming here for economic gain. Our organization ensures that all of our clients are successfully housed, fed, employed, and overall thriving here in Bloomington. With recent national cuts to SNAP and Medicaid and other resources for immigrant populations, it's making our job even harder to do that. As Exodus represents people who fled their countries for persecution, it is only right that we stand here today along Care Not Cages and New Leaf New Life and other organizations and oppose the construction of the new jail facility in Monroe County. We believe that the $200-plus million earmarked for this facility is more effective in investing in affordable housing, mental health care, and substance use treatment. We call on county officials to make stronger, more comprehensive investment in the community by supporting these critical, yet severely underfunded, resources in Bloomington. My background is in mental health and addiction. I have experienced working with people involved in the carceral system as well as providing mental health treatment to refugees in Bloomington. I have seen firsthand the insidious roles that poverty and trauma play in people's lives. Research tells us time and again that without comprehensive social services, poverty and trauma continue to compound over time. If, as a community, we worked together to treat the problem rather than criminalize them, we would see less crime, less violence, less overdoses, and less death. This week, it has been announced that Camp Atterbury is being turned into a concentration camp for immigrants. Where it was once a safe haven and place of welcome for Afghan allies in 2021, it will soon be synonymous with the threats of detention and deportation. So many incredible people in our state welcomed people fleeing persecution, and we invested in the Afghan community that is now thriving and an integral part of our community and our country. Please do not follow in the footsteps of our national government and replace a better future with one that is behind bars, the chance to heal with unaffordable bail, or deny hope with the promise of cruelty. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, seeing no hands raised, and if you are on teams, go ahead and raise your hand so we know that you're interested in making public comment. But since we don't see any, again, I'll go forward to the lectern here. And if you are here and you want to say something, go ahead and, you know, stand in line so that you can go ahead and sign in if you want. All right, go ahead.
Hey there. I will try not to take up much of your time. My name is Pat Wall. I am a co-chair of the Bloomington Democratic Socialists of America. We are an organization with dozens of dues-paying, official-voting members, and many, many more associated members. We were asked a while ago now what we thought of this letter, and we voted unanimously to endorse it. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up.
Hello, I'm Megan Betts, CEO and President of Mother Hubbard's Cupboard. The Hub is a community food resource center that has served the community since 1998, offering a food pantry, educational programming in our kitchen and gardens, and space to build nourishing relationships that help our community navigate the challenges that come with food insecurity. I wanted to come here tonight to thank New Leaf New Life for sharing their expertise and concerns with the council. And I also wanted to highlight how their argument for renovation over expansion aligns with the Hub's values. First, the Hub recognizes and invests in the power of good food to bring people together and support healthy communities. And we work actively to eliminate barriers to equitable food access by addressing both immediate needs and their root causes. We acknowledge that not being incarcerated will always be more nourishing, connective, and healing than being incarcerated. And we're thankful for the efforts of New Leaf New Life and all those that support alternatives to incarceration while seeking justice to keep our community connected and free. No garden, no treatment program, no social or educational program offered in a prison will ever be more connective and supportive than not being in prison. Second, community is the heart of our organization. Protective relationships and collective power are built when people come together over a meal, harvest from the garden, and share skills. An emphasis on investment in services that build such relationships, including expanding housing, mental health care, and substance use treatment in our community, would offer returns the carceral system is incapable of matching. Finally, sustainability is vital to community health. We value building sustainable programming, equitably supporting people, and responsibly stewarding our environment. We strongly support stewarding our resources responsibly by renovating an existing site rather than prioritizing new and larger construction and by investing in services that could reduce engagement with the carceral system and build skills and connection in our community. We're thankful for the way that the county council has shown up for service providers like ourselves in the community and for your time listening this evening. And we look forward to continuing to collaborate with you to build a county that centers on compassionate care and equitable distribution of resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up here in the Nat U Hill Room.
Hello.
Hi.
I am also a member of the Bloomington DSA, which supported this letter, but I want to speak as a citizen of the county who's represented by this body. Oh, my name is Haley Toks. And to just acknowledge that we are limited in the resources that we have and how we prioritize them says a lot about our values. And so just to put it plainly, I think that I would like to see this body in the county invest in people and improving lives in supportive services and not in the new facility. With all due respect to Mr. Falk, as he said, he's not a jail expert, and I do believe that he's mischaracterized the research, and hopefully someone here can speak to that. And also, I want to say on a personal note, as someone who's lost a loved one to incarceration, I want to speak to the way that this damages not just the person who's put away, but all of the lives that they leave behind and the people who have to work full-time to support them and to lose that part of their support. And to just say, when someone is removed from the community, it leaves a hole that we should be working to strengthen the fabric of our community and not tear it apart. And this is a huge amount of money that could make a big difference in a lot of lives, and I'd love to see it considered accordingly.
Thank you. Hello, welcome.
My name is Nicole Segal. I'm a resident, member of Care Not Cages, and a member of the faculty at the IU Bloomington History Department. And I'd like to start with a historical note. The Quakers who put up the very first jail, the innovation that took us from the stocks and the gallows into incarceration in 1790, came to rue the day that they proposed this modernization and punishment. And now comes the ACLU in the form of Ken Falk in Indiana to encourage greater and greater jail building with the same kind of humanitarian logic. But the logic is specious. Jail building is punitive. Carceral expansion is not what the ACLU's core values actually support. Ken Falk, I don't know you, but I hope that someday you equally come to rue the day you spearheaded so much jail building in Indiana. Shame on your extrapolation of facts far beyond the legal sphere. I want just to point out to you, council members, that Ken Falk is speaking not on legal matters when he says to you that the jail is not renovatable. Those are architectural questions. Those are questions about the building. And you have commissioned two reports, which said some confusing things, but they concluded that the jail could be renovated and put dollar amounts on that jail. They also concluded that the pressure on the jail could be vastly reduced, relieved, by reducing the number of people in the jail and offered you a number of solutions that you could choose before building a new jail that would allow you to keep and renovate the existing jail. Before Seth Mutchler of Care Not Cages spoke, he handed to you a legal memo drafted by some Maurer School of Law students, whose conclusion I'm going to read into the record in my remaining minute. While a new jail would be a solution that would satisfy the ACLU, it is not the only option. As long as the current jail meets the standards of CREEPA, a new jail is not necessary. In addition, the court could never order the county to build a new jail, so this would have to be on the county's own volition and a part of their settlement agreement. In sum, Monroe County has options. Finally, the fear of Monroe County being pushed into building a new beep jail, as claimed at a city council meeting, does not seem to be rooted in facts. In fact, the process, whether with ACLU or DOJ involvement, seems to take at least a decade, which is more time than the county has claimed it would take to build a new jail without federal intervention. Therefore, the county should not fear a rushed build due to the federal government. In conclusion, the county should focus on following CREEPA guidelines, either before or after any warnings of the DOJ, and finding a more permanent solution to the constitutional violations claimed in the ACLU suit. All of this can be done without building a new jail.
Thank you. Next up in the Nat U Hill Room. Any online or shout-out? Nope, you're good. Still don't have any hands raised? Still don't have any hands raised, and they have reset the clock here, so again, just state your name, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Owen. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator for Exodus Refugee Immigration here in Bloomington. I wanted to take a moment to expound further upon what our director said a few moments ago. The prospect of building a new jail is so reminiscent of the current presidential administration, which is running roughshod over this country wanting to incarcerate so many more people. I understand that there are different circumstances. He is looking to do away with due process of so many immigrants in this country regardless of their status. However, you cannot incarcerate a society into healing and improving, and that is the bottom line of how we allocate this $230-plus million. I understand the concerns about the current state of the jail. I would like to believe that we could improve upon it, however, as was alluded to by our director a few moments ago, representing our immigrant clients and the attacks under which they are currently facing with this current administration, HR1 of the current session of Congress is doing away with their SNAP benefits and their Medicaid and Medicare with no recourse whatsoever. This is not about instilling extra arbitrary rules or extra work requirements. They are simply losing these resources, basic human rights of food and medical care, and that will have a devastating impact, not only nationwide but here in the community. We are going to feel the strain within our local food pantries, food supplies, our local community health clinic, HealthNet, which is a wonderful partner of ours. We are having to prepare our clients now with what is coming down the pike, and I don't know what to tell a client who currently takes seven medications because of chronic untreated health conditions that was no fault of her own while she was waiting to come to the U.S. Those resources are leaving, and where that $230 million can go into the Bloomington community to provide basic human rights should today, tomorrow, and for the future years absolutely take precedent over a new jail facility. And so I would hope that the county council will reconsider their position if they have previously been in favor of building this new jail, and that they will reallocate this money towards supporting people who are going to be suffering, if not already, in the very near future. We are going to see just profound impacts on this community, and it's hard to stress that point enough. Just as a quick background, my personal history working in Bloomington, I've lived here most of my life. I have worked for the Hoosier Hills Food Bank. I have worked for Amethyst House in addiction treatment. I have worked as an emergency assistance caseworker for the trustees' office. And so I would hope that you would take heed to the people working in social services, that this is where this money needs to be allocated, and as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, still seeing no hands raised via teams, so again, I'll keep going back here to the Natie Hill Room. If there is somebody that wants to make public comment and hasn't done so for items not on the agenda, please go ahead and come to the lectern here, and you'll have up to three minutes. I know we got a special guest in the audience here, and I was wondering if he was going to come up and say something as well, too. Seeing, okay, so gonna look at teams again, and not seeing any takers. So, again, I will, okay, go ahead. It's okay, don't be nervous.
Okay, my name is Ian Good, and I am a member of the ACLU, and I don't think everyone who is a member of the ACLU agrees with the attorney. I don't think, as a citizen of this county, that building a new jail is a good idea.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing none here in the Natie Hill Room, and seeing no more via teams here, I will go ahead and close up our portion of public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. I do want to take a point of privilege and say thank you to all those who took the time out today to come to us and make a public comment. Really appreciate that. We haven't had that in a while, so I appreciate every last one of your comments here, so thank you. Next up, we will go to item number five, which is department updates. This is for a chance for departments of Monroe County to provide a brief update on their department. Each department that wants to come up and provide us with an update will have up to 10 minutes, and so if you are a department here, you can come here to the table, looks like we already have a taker here, and you'll have up to 10 minutes, and if you are online, go ahead and please raise your hand. So, looks like we got special guests here, so please go ahead.
Okay, excuse me. I'm Carlos Laverty, Director of the Monroe County Airport, and I'm here with Mr. Ken Ritchie, President of the Monroe County Board of Aviation Commissioners, and Colonel Alan Boyd, Vice President of the Monroe County Board of Aviation Commissioners. And we are here to present a department update.
We have slides?
Yeah, we have. While he's doing that, let me just say thank you. I spent the better part of 30 years in uniform, most of it overseas. I don't know how many thousands of government meetings I've been in, but this is the first county government meeting I've ever seen or been part of. And I, all of the activity that I just saw made me realize that's why I served. And I want you to know that. It's this level of proactivity on the part of the community and the willingness of government to listen, elected officials to listen, that makes me feel good inside. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I thank everybody who came today.
Thank you.
Okay, can we get in full screen mode? I am one of the aviation commissioners, well, you can figure it out. We're working our way through an airport master plan, which may be a new concept to you, and believe it would be worthwhile, given where we are, to come in here and give you an update and educate you on where we are and why we're doing it, and some of the emerging results that we're finding. Next slide, or you got it. The purpose here today is to, no, go back. Okay, I'll say next slide when it's next slide. We want to update you on the process we're going through to develop the airport master plan, which the FAA asks us to do every 10 years. The fact is, it's been a long time, much longer than 10 years, since this airport had a master plan or went through a master plan process. And we believe as a relatively new board that we need to do, we want to do a more proactive job communicating what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it to county leadership on a more regular basis. So, we're launching that today and plan to come back when it's appropriate. So this is a major effort on our part, and it's far enough along that we've got some insights to give you. It's an information briefing, there are no asks, not here with our handout, not here asking you to make any hard decisions, it's just to educate you today on airport operations and strategy. There we go. As an airport under FAA oversight, we're required to have a master plan and periodically update it with a 20-year outlook. Most business and industry strategic plans have about a five-year look, only the first year of which is really meaningful in most cases, but we're asked by the FAA to think 20 years out, four times as far as anyone else. It's a comprehensive look at airport infrastructure, assets, flight operations, and other business development potential and growth. The FAA funds us to do it, and they will not only review it but also end on it. If we look at, in it, we look at current to future airport use, aviation trends, community and regional trends, the rightsizing of aircraft to runway, and service capabilities, and others. For much that, for that, we use a professional national aviation engineering firm with access to a variety of aviation data, as well as expertise with the FAA's competitive funding programs. We also include BEDC as an important resource, and we're actively engaged with them on a weekly basis. Central to it is an updated current to future airport layout plan, which is a sub-element of it, but probably the biggest component of it, that envisions any improvements and development we may see in the coming years, or would like to see in the coming years. It requires community and other stakeholder engagement, and it's typically a two-year process. We're about two-thirds complete, which means we've collected all needed information and are in the final stages of analysis. Our vision, this begs the question, so what is your vision? Where are you going? Our vision is to serve current community needs as best possible, make the airport a welcoming aviation portal to Bloomington and the area, and to drive growth consistent with community and regional business needs. With that, we take into consideration the ongoing support to IU Athletics, Crane's expanding research and development portfolio, Indiana's vision of an I-69 tech corridor, and local industry and business. Next slide. The slide coming up shows you a layout of our stakeholders as we see them. So, local and state organizations in the upper left, education and training with IU, Ivy Tech on the lower left. Defense is an increasing group of stakeholders with Crane Naval Surface Warfare Center. We host a Civil Air Patrol detachment and have for years. We occasionally service the Indiana National Guard. I doubt you're aware, but earlier this spring, U.S. Special Operations Command used Monroe County Airport as a forward-area refuel point for a major aviation exercise that went from Kentucky to Minnesota and back, all in the dark at night, right up my alley. And then other DoD entities. And local industries, defense contractors that are forming around Westgate and other places, IU Athletics is a large customer of ours. IU has a number of aviators who have their own planes, fly in here for football games, Indy 500, you name it. And then on-base, on-airport clients and operators that you see in the middle. So it's a fairly large stakeholder base. Next slide. Planning process that we go through is FAA-mandated, and I know that's hard to read up there, but let me just tell you that in Phase 1 is planning, Phase 2 is data collection, Phase 3 is analysis, Phase 4 is implementation planning, and then Phase 5 is approval to be followed by execution. We are today around the top of the horn there on the latter stage of analysis, actually a little bit ahead of the two-year norm, and anticipate being done with this early next, or by next spring. Next slide. We have spent a fair amount of time on community outreach, soliciting input. We formed a project advisory committee that's not just ourselves and onsite in-house people, but also reached out to local business, industry, IU, Crane, as many of those stakeholders as we could get to come. That was facilitated by a professional engineering firm that does this for a living and guided by the Board, the Board. User tenant surveys, a lot of discussions, continuous collaboration with the FAA and Indiana Department of Transportation, and then public workshops. We held the first public workshop last spring, and from that, we get the emerging results that I'll share with you in a few minutes. The plan is to conduct the second one this fall as we conclude analysis and do a better job of formalizing conclusions. Next slide. This one is more just, it won't shock you, but I think most people here don't, in this community, don't understand the reach of this airport. It shocked me. I'm a 2-million-miler, you know, guy on Delta, and I've been in a gazillion airports, but I had no idea when I moved here seven years ago, I knew there was an airport, but I had no clue that it had this kind of reach that you see on this chart here. We're all over the United States, Canada, Mexico, with outreach even into Europe and Asia, if you count Cook Business Flights. It's not just the small, little county airport with some guys with Cessnas and Beechcraft flying around on weekends. Next slide. Just a snapshot of the current state, just to remind you what we do have and what we do. We have a full line of fixed base operator services and facilities between Cook Aviation and BMG Jets, those are the two large buildings you see when you come in out there. Aircraft rental, air traffic control, so many hours per day, and then available after-hours by appointment. Flight instruction, rental hangar space, which is pretty busy, charter services, we've got a barber shop and an Airbnb out there, which is a nice Airbnb. Ivy Tech Auto Class, we've hosted for several years, my understanding is that's going to go away due to some cuts at Ivy Tech. But it's just provided as a reminder of what we offer and do. We've seen over $10 million in FAA investments over the past few years, all improving infrastructure for safe flight operations. For example, new runway lighting system is in the process of being installed as of today, and we're competing for FAA funding that would allow us to update, if not replace, the old air traffic control tower, which is about as old as I am. The radios in there are about as old as me. Carlos was in Washington just last week at the Air Traffic Control Tower Symposium, where FAA officials and folks of, you know, similar to us attend, and I tell you, based on what he was engaged in, it looks like we are very competitive for new air traffic control tower funding in the next go-around. So, progress. You also used some of your ARPA money that you gladly gave us to approve stormwater, drainage, which we needed this summer, given all the rains we've had, so all that's going to good use. Next slide. This is where we talk about the future, and this comes out of the stakeholder meetings that we've had and the brainstorming that's going on in there. I paint the upper-left box green, we have almost 200 acres of developable land on airport property, that's inside the fence. Those conversations came, a variety of ideas of what we might think to do with that acreage, who we might encourage, what we might, you know, seek to bring in here to spur some growth and development. So you see a number of things, they're mostly tech-related, they're aviation-related, but BMG Jets does an awful lot of aircraft maintenance, Ivy Tech could offer aircraft maintenance, there's a connection, there's a future potential, just as an example. Avionics Engineering, RDTNE, that aligns very closely with a number of projects and programs at Crane. Future advanced air mobility, VertiPort. Electric Uber, you know, aerial Ubers are coming. They're happening on the East Coast and the West Coast today. They will find their way to the middle of the country, you know, however long that takes, but they're coming. And just think of it that way as an aerial Uber. I'm, as an aerospace engineer, I'm excited about that and the prospects of that. That's like Jetsons becoming real. Unmanned aerial vehicle research and development at Crane. Crane is heavily involved in that. It is a major Defense Department initiative that's getting a ton of money. It would be beneficial to Crane to have an air corridor for UAV testing, unless, say, it went from Bloomington to Terre Haute, from Monroe County Airport to Holman Field and back. It's not on any major air traffic corridor, it's fairly open, it's controllable, it's safe. There's a lot of potential there in my mind. Increased flight training, and just general engineering research, all that. I suppressed return-of-limited commercial air service and lodging and hotels and all that. That's premature, although there is, when you talk to people around here, there is growing demand, consistent in growing demand for flights to a number of places, especially Washington, D.C. Yeah? So, all of the ideas that you see here are realizable, and we're serious about trying to attract those, and we would like to be. Lafayette Airport recently initiated direct service from Lafayette Airport recently initiated direct service from its airport to Chicago, but that's heavily subsidized by Purdue. So I don't envision any of that scenario happening here. I'm not bold enough to be there yet. And it's easier to get to Indianapolis with I-69 completed, so my hour drive to the airport's now, you know, 45, 50 minutes. So, next slide. Almost done. Just some key pack ideas. I've already mentioned some of these. Foremost was preserve and improve current business and meet existing needs better. So better lighting, better runways, better air traffic control, safer, better, more all-weather capability, and increase community awareness of services. What was a resounding thing to us from every stakeholder was make developable land shovel-ready. And it's not. And then everything else, I think I've talked about before. But enhance airport hospitality. If you saw Bloom Magazine last year, you saw an article that had a rendering, an artist's rendering of a terminal that we floated. It's an artist's concept, but it's something that I think this community, we think this community could envision having it. Next slide. So, three observations slash findings. One is that the operations that we're undertaking today with various improvements are doing everything we can within the funding that we have to make the airport as good as it can be. And I think Ken and I are both proud to sit here and say Carlos is doing a magnificent job out there running the airport with his staff. We've got a retired Bloomington Fire Captain as his deputy, and he's got a handle on, he's got a handle as a Fire Captain would. Future use projection with all of the surveying and the data, the national to regional to local data, though suggests marginal operations growth continues unless we do something to develop property out there. Seems like common sense, but that's just a point to be made. Opportunities are regularly occurring, and I'm going to talk to that on the last slide. Airport land is attractive. The biggest limiting factor and challenge we have right now is sewer. Maybe you knew that was coming. We can't not deal with it from our perspective. So, next slide. I lied a second to the last slide. You've seen this. I'll just pass right on by that and we'll get to the bottom line over here. But I just... You may have never seen this chart, but it's color... I had them color-coded to show everyone available acreage, developable acreage that exists around the airport. So you've got the three parcels to the north, northeast of the airport. That's all looking north, and that large parcel in the southwest of the main runway, that's all developable. Bloomington Sewer serves most of those white buildings you see on the right, to the right of the airstrip. What we lack is several hundred yards of extension to those developable plots up there to make them shovel-ready. That's what we lack. And that's the most, you know, that's the picture of a thousand words thing right there, I think. And that leads me to the final one. So let me talk about opportunities that we have and have had. This is a BEDC provided some of this input. I branded as their slide, but I consolidated information in it. And over the last two years, we've been shortlisted by four businesses from out of town, out of state, interested in developing on airport property. That accounts for over $400 million worth of capital investment and over 500 jobs. Well-paying jobs. They like it because it's near Crane. It's near technology that they need to use or they need to bring here. It's convenient to Westgate. It's got easy access to an airport facility. Easy access, ready access to education and training. And because people like Bloomington for the same reasons we all like Bloomington. Turns those CEO halves or the decision-makers have are twofold. And I'm not qualified to talk to workforce. That's more a BEDC thing, but that resonates in all of them. That's a concern that they have. Our concern right now, and I think we get them past that. The one example I've personally been involved with over the last several months, it's a company, about a $50 million company that has an affiliation with a subcontractor, a large subcontractor at Crane, and wants a footprint here. They're in an airport elsewhere, and the CEO likes that company and his employees to be in an aviation environment, and so he wants them to be on an airport. We tick all those blocks. We check everything on the list except when you go down to utilities. It's electricity, yes. Water, yes. Internet, yes. Sewer, oops, no. And that's where we are. We are working more closely with BEDC and other developers around here on our own to try to understand, better understand alternatives to Bloomington Sewer. But there are very few. You either get into industrial septic, which nobody really wants, or you get into packaged sewer plants, which I'm sure has come up here once in a while. We're not experts on packaged plants, but we just estimated one for this one potential builder here. That's a million and a half dollars. And the guy wants to come spend $10 million on a building, and we tell him, well, you gotta... We gotta come up with a solution for a million and a half packaged sewer plant with $100,000 a year operating cost. That kind of makes them look elsewhere. So, that's what we're running into, and I just want to paint that elephant, just to put it plainly, for you, as we will with commissioners. We are trying our best to push development, urge development, not in a great way, but in a practical way. But people are coming to us. They're literally coming here from out of state wanting to operate on our airfield, and we would like to be able to satisfy them, to get to a yes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Because I think we were, there might have been a little bit of a mix-up because we were... Department updates usually are only 10 minutes, but we should have probably had y'all on the presentation portion. I'm going to look to council to see, and that's nobody's fault, but thank you for that because we definitely needed to hear that. Council, if anybody has, we'll entertain a couple of questions and then we'll go about our day here. So I'm going to look to my left and see if anybody has any questions. I'm going to look to my right, and I'll start down the days here. So Counselor Iverson and Henry.
Thank you all for being here. It's a pleasure to have you back. We look forward to future updates. As someone who flies pretty regularly for a day job, I look forward to commercial limited flights here in Bloomington and having that bumped up the list, although I'm not the decision-maker there. We hear you 100% on sewer. We hear you 100% on development. We hear you on businesses wanting to come here, and I'm really glad that you're going to go talk to the commissioners about that because they need to hear it.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Just to refresh memory, I am the current council liaison to aviation. I know Marty's a council member. Hawkins sat there before as well. So I got a little bit of a preview of this from Carlos a few months back of what was coming. And I agree, it's important for the community to really know what the airport is bringing to Monroe County. It's not just the touch-and-go. Sometimes we see the planes fly over, but there's a lot of activity going on out there. And I thank you for the presentation. I'm also the council's representative on plan commission. And we've had a bit of a debate recently about what the council might fund in terms of infrastructure in the community if we had an appetite to be building out infrastructure to capture some of that economic development. I think you just painted a picture of what, at least I know from my seat, we would consider good risk tolerance to try to get those services out there to make those connections. And it is remarkable when folks, if you have a chance to drive out that way and kind of see the airport in action or just seeing what's potential, we're on the knife-edge of something. I feel it too. I've flown into Huntsville before for work, and while that is a commercial-based airport, it's also an airport that services Redstone and DOD infrastructure down that way. And I don't want to say we're on our way to that, but I kind of feel it. You know, you can see that infrastructure coming in to be the base, the airport that supports Crane, and just the remarkable opportunity we have here. So thank you for the presentation. I look forward to the strategic planning process and again, to make that case to include investments in the infrastructure we need to do out there.
Thank you. Go look at the Columbus Airport. That's a, to me, that's a great example of what we could be and what we could look like.
Yes. When you had, on one of your slides, you showed how close that sewer really is, and yet it's a little further than from you to me here, so...
There's much further to go.
If we had interest from the city to work with us, do we have a price tag on what that would be?
If we run some numbers on the different parcels, there was a proposal that we had, I believe in 2019, 2020, to develop that 55-acre parcel on the northeast corner of our property. And so we do know what that figure is, and we've already done all of the drawings. So we know it's been presented.
I recall that. We keep planning and we're ready to move ahead, and then, oh, it seems like it's always, it has to do connection with the sewer connection. And so this, it might be a while before we can get people who are willing to work together with the airport, with the county and the city and try to make this work. But with your enthusiasm to bring that kind of success to Monroe County, hopefully that will help make that happen. Thank you.
No, we're not talking about the last mile. We're talking about the last quarter-mile.
I have a question, and then we'll wrap it up here. You mentioned, it's a shame to hear that Ivy Tech, due to budget cuts, that got cut. And obviously, that seems to be the thing with the state, but that's a whole other conversation for another day. When, a couple of questions. Has that already, is that like done as of now, or?
No.
Okay. Do you know when?
No, I have no knowledge of that at this time.
And then, just out of curiosity, because Ivy Tech was mentioned, and I don't know why this just kind of popped in my head. Is there, do you all work with like the local school corporations, like MCC and RBB? Is that something that you can do?
That's something we could look into. We have not worked with the local school district as of yet outside of, you know, some periphery, extracurricular activities. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
We do have hopes, and I keep petitioning Ivy Tech to consider a UAS, you know, technical course or something like that, that we could host at the airport or aircraft, airframe and power plant course. They have that up north in northern Indiana. We would love to have that at our facility. And then to Councilmember Iverson's comment, next week, I'll be sitting down with airlines at an air service development conference to see if we can face-to-face generate some interest.
I'm going to have to find more people than just me.
40,000 of your best friends.
Well, we appreciate that. And I forgot to mention, thank you for your service. You mentioned earlier you served. So thank you for your service, and thank you all for the update. Thank you. Looks like we have another department update who has been patiently waiting. We appreciate your efforts here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Jordan Miller with Monroe County Sheriff's Office, financial coordinator for the Correctional Center. I wanted to bring to your attention our semi-annual summary of the Monroe County Commissary Fund. I do believe it's worth noting that due to recent changes, this will begin taking place quarterly. So we'll be being able to meet more frequently and maybe address things in a better manner by doing that. Start off by mentioning the balance. As of January 1st was $118,090.61. We had a total of $106,849.10 worth of receipts, $770.18 worth of interest from January 1 through June 30th, a total of $96,282.79 for the expenditures, with a remaining balance as of June 30th of 2025 of $129,427.10. Provided you with approximately eight pages. The first two are kind of what I'm explaining now. Pages 3 through 8 are a reflection of the line, a line-by-line reflection of the receipts and expenditures that have taken place from January through June. As you can see on page 2, approximately 82% of those expenditures come in our commissary inventory line, which is used for resale of commissary items, as well as our equipment line. As you know, we've, equipment has been something that we've had to really spend some money on to get things where we believe they need to be. I provide a list of expenditures below on page 2. And again, worth noting, nicotine pouches, e-cigarettes, and beverages from PepsiCo are the top expenditures in our commissary inventory resale line. Equipment, we recently made some changes, a remodel to our inmate library, bookshelves, desks, and things of that sort, in addition to equipment for our C-TAC team. Taser cartridges, of course, are a big cost in that equipment line, and uniforms, additional uniforms and such. Again, I've provided you with a reflection of the line-by-line receipts and expenditures, and at this point, I'll gladly answer any questions or concerns that you might have.
Does, I see a hand waving. So Counselor Hawkins, go ahead.
Yes. When I was reviewing that information you sent today, and I saw the thing about the nicotine pouches, et cetera, and it was just a few minutes before that, my daughter was pointing out to me, oh, did you see this? And having to do with the price of a pack of cigarettes here in Indiana versus right across the line in another state. Now, I don't smoke, so it's not going to cost me a penny, however. When you see the number of incarcerated people who have an addiction to nicotine, what is, and this is probably not a question for you, but for jail management, but it just, you might share with them that I'm concerned about how the inmates are going to react when they're dealing with other addictions as well, and then the addiction of nicotine. And I don't know what the answer is. I'm just thinking that we're probably going to see some very upset people, and that will be up to jail management to decide what to do, but just wanted to share that concern.
Absolutely. Of course, recently, prices have increased. As you'll notice in the notes that I provided on the second page, we did switch recently from an Amcon Distributing to Custom Technologies LLC. One of many things that we're constantly doing on a daily basis is looking to see what we can do from a cost-savings measure and perspective. So, of course, there's not much you can do when prices increase to the extent that they have. And, you know, that's a very, it's a very big concern, of course, you know, how inmates are going to react to this and kind of the aftermath of all of this. So it's something certainly to keep our eyes on.
All right. Counselor Henry.
Thank you, and thank you, Jordan. So I had one question on the contractual line item regarding the reimbursement for travel for jail transition team. Where were they traveling in that six-month timeframe? Just out of curiosity.
They've made, I mean, without having it right in front of me...
It's on the spot, I'm sorry.
No, then that's quite all right. Let me see. Was there a specific month that you were referring to or just?
It's just the window. It's like you got 1900 over the six-month window.
And you're speaking of the contractual, correct?
Yeah, and then the note mentions that's travel reimbursement.
Correct. And so the main reimbursements from that contractual line are specific to the transition team director. As the contract states, the monthly portion that's paid comes from ARPA funding currently, and so the additional expenses to travel to and from various facilities to discuss and discover opportunities for change, things of that sort. The travel to and from those destinations are, per the contract, it's agreed that we pay that from our commissary.
I'm kind of scratching an itch. I'm not trying to be prosecutorial, but just to say that... So you said it was multiple locations, like it wasn't just like a one or... Do you have it like itemized, or was it something that was just a part of the monthly disbursement, like a standard flat rate of disbursement?
And as you can see, I believe on page 2, I... And as you can see, I believe on page two I did reflect that these, these purchases are for both our previous transition team director, Mr. Grass, and our current Mr. Smith. These, I know with our previous director, reimbursement took place, I believe in March for a couple or few months of travel. It's basically one of those things where I know they've made trips to neighboring states to visit jails to just, one thing in particular is the material of beds and things of that sort. Just again, trying to do what we can to determine what is available to us and what changes we can make to better, you know.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Counselor Iverson.
Thank you so much for this level of detail. The month-by-month detail where you're giving us an expenditure line and then explanation beneath it is exactly what we love and how deep we like to dive, so thank you for providing that. I mean, we can even now tell everyone that we know that there's poetry going on in the jail and that they're eating Sam's Club food, so that's, that's great.
That's correct.
So I, I just wanted to, to thank you for doing that and we look forward to this quarterly report. Particularly as, you know, I'm just really thankful for this level of detail, that's what we want.
Thank you for your kind words. Yes, I do perceive, you know, these future quarterly meetings, we'll be able to maybe have a be able to dive in even further than we are in a six-month period, so very excited about that and the changes that are to come.
Thanks.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes, actually, my comment is very similar to Counselor Iverson's in that I really appreciate the level of detail. Since it came today, I didn't get a chance to look at it.
My apologies.
Just one of those days and so I'll, I'll check it out and if I have any questions, I'll reach out, but I, I do appreciate having it in front of us at, at this level. And the fact that, you know, decent line item is the inmate workers and appreciation. And I think that's something that your office has emphasized and has done really well, so I appreciate that.
We really appreciate that and it is, it's really refreshing to see, you know, the level that our staff and our administrators are going to really give back and really promote positive behavior and things of that sort, so just some of the things that maybe the public or people aren't seeing. This is a great opportunity for us to show that we are, you know, rewarding, you know, and incentivizing inmates, you know, and it's, it's really, I think it's a win-win situation. Thank you.
All right, I'll take one more and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Madam President. In May and June, Todd Smith spent about $1,000 per month on travel. If you don't have it in front of you right now, can you let us know later what exactly that travel was as transition director?
And again, unfortunately, I'm very sorry, I don't have each of like the, you know, the specific receipts and such, he provides me with a mild reimbursement for those different, various needs and trainings that take place. I am not, at this point in time, I don't have those specific destinations in front of me, I will gladly provide you a better reflection of those, but as you can imagine, he and our transition team are actually on their way to Georgia as we speak to, again, to look at a facility there and discuss, again, continually working around the clock and he's, he and all people, of course, is traveling more than any of them to, to make sure that we're doing what we can to be prepared for this transition and to just do our due diligence, but I can certainly give you about a reflection of those exact locations if that's.
That would be really helpful because of where we are with the jail planning process. That, I think that would be really interesting to hear about as to why we're going to Georgia to figure out what we could do better on a site that is being planned out by architects right now. Please follow up.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
I believe he's with one of our architects or.
That's great. That's great.
Okay, I am gonna take one more and anybody else that has already asked a question, no more. But I will go ahead and add, or Counselor Fidel, go ahead.
Thank you so much. You did mention something about the public, but I did see that this came in not in time for the packet, so I'm concerned about the public not being able to see it at this point.
I do apologize. We were at conference last week and I've been, you know, we want to get this to you all as timely as possible. The opportunity was not available to reconcile June and be at the last month's meeting. We had spoken with members of council and I explained to them the desire to be on the 22nd and I certainly am not placing blame, but I've just, it falls on, on me for not having this.
So I'm just thinking about the future, how you might make this public, right? Can we be maybe assured that the next time the general public can see this as well as the council?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. My apologies again.
Thank you. Okay. No worries at all. We appreciate that. Thank you and again, thank you for your patience.
Of course.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any other department heads that would like to make a 10-minute presentation? Go ahead and come to the lectern here or raise your hand via teams. And we appreciate all the department updates because members of the public need to be informed as this council, so we definitely appreciate that. Thank you all so much. All right, we are going to move on to item number six, which is boards and commissions.
Counsel, I move to approve the citizen appointment of Julie Robertson to the Sophia Travis Grant Committee, completing a two-year term to expire on July 22nd, 2027.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. And those that were on the interview committee would like to give an opportunity to make a brief comment. I'm gonna look at Counselor Fidel.
So it was my pleasure to serve on the committee to choose someone and there were three applicants that attended the interview process and based on everyone's participation in that process, it was my total thrill to vote in favor of Ms. Robertson, so I look forward to working with her.
You, and I see Counselor Deckard's hand is up and then I'll go to Iverson.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I hope you can hear me okay. I am, I'm in, driving, we're driving through Maine right now and so I apologize. I had some technical issues, I'm now on my phone. But I just wanted to say I'm so excited for Julie's service and selection for this. I've known her for a good number of years and her public service, her tremendous commitment to the community and for this very special committee, which does so much with so many partner organizations, some of which were referred to in public comment earlier or the goods or the needs that they serve were referred to. I know that Julie will be a real boon in helping us do that very, very hard work, which is important to all of us, so for her appointment.
And Counselor Iverson?
And I'm just gonna round things off by saying we had a really robust pool of candidates and was really happy to select Ms. Robertson to this role to the Sophia Travis Grant Committee and boy, are we doing it just in the nick of time because on July 29th at 5:00 PM, there is the Sophia Travis Committee Grant Kickoff Meeting. So we're happy to vote you in now so that you can be part of that.
Yes, Counselor Hawk.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Ms. Robertson to come to the podium so the public can see the person that we are going to put on this committee. And I know firsthand what a hard worker she is and beautiful spirit and so I think she'll make a great addition. And welcome to Monroe County Government.
Thank you, Captain Hawk.
Already a part of Monroe County Government.
Absolutely. Ms. Robertson, would you like to say some remarks?
Sure, so I was very excited for the opportunity to apply for this position. Several councilmen know me personally, know the hard work that I've done in the community and I think one of the things that I wanted to stress during my interview process is not only do I have a lot of experience with grants and, and divvying out the grants, but I'm a boots-on-the-ground volunteer. Every week, my husband and I do something in the community to raise money. We have a fundraiser coming up this Saturday, actually, for the American Legion. When I interviewed for this position, I got up at 5:30, went down to Stonecrest, we, we did a fundraiser for the local fire protection department and then I had to come back, get ready and come back for the interview, so not only do I look forward to being part of the grant process, but I look forward to continuing to serve the community in a volunteer capacity.
Thank you. And I had a pleasure of meeting you recently, unfortunately under some dire circumstances, but definitely had a, a pleasure of meeting you. So, yeah. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, because we do not take public comment on board and commission appointments and because again, we have a member of council online, we will have to do a roll call vote, so may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thanks to the council.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is the item number seven, which are the consent agenda items.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items for July 22nd. The July 10th and 24th County Council's summary minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments from council related to this particular item? See, no hands raised on teams and no movement here. We will take public comment. If you have a public comment on this item, come forward to the lectern here in the Natie Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Next up is item number eight, which are ongoing business. And this is A, which is the overview or we will have Kim Falk, Director, Legal Director of the ACLU here and I will kick it over to Ms. Molly Turner King to give a brief introduction as to why we're having this conversation and then, go ahead.
I think Mr. Falk might have left the meeting after his public comment.
Okay, well, that was a doozy. But is there a way that we could maybe try to get him back?
I can try to email him, I'm not sure that I have a contact number, but I'll work on it.
Okay, so how about this, we'll just kind of bump that to the last of the items for ongoing business to, and I'll just kind of come back and look to see if we have him back on there, so we can. Counsel, no objection. I would like to move Mr. Falk's presentation as long as we can get him back to the end of the ongoing business portions so we can get through the rest of the agenda. All right. No objection, so order. All right, so we'll move on to item B, which is from the Health Department.
Counsel, as a reminder, this item was tabled from the July 8th meeting. I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 1161-0000 Local Public Health Services to deappropriate $422,761 in the Personnel category.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second and we see Ms. Lori Kelly come in here. Welcome, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Yes, welcome and thank you for being here. So this request was a made. Essentially, the mission of the Monroe County Health Department is to protect, promote and improve the health of all people in Monroe County. And so this request was made as a way to ensure that we could continue providing services due to these legislative changes.
Thank you very much for that. And I'm gonna look over here to my left and see if anybody has any questions for Ms. Kelly. Okay, looking over to my right and seeing if anybody else has any questions. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I will just want to once again express my concern. We continue to move some expenses from the Local Public Health Services 1161 over to what is more in the general portion that's covered with local property taxes and a lot of those expenses, I would assume, had to do with some grant dollars that are not as, we do not know what the future holds for that. And so I do have concern about moving things around, especially salaries and so forth. So, but I wanted to say, last meeting I was saying, no, no, don't deappropriate it because of course, those people still need to receive a paycheck and so we couldn't deappropriate in that fund. So I'm glad that that part happened, but I, I just don't, I won't be supporting this movement of dollars around to avoid doing what the state has directed us to do with the grant dollars.
Oh, yes, Counselor Henry.
And thank you, Madam President. Ms. Kelly, can you maybe once, maybe clarify again what, what is, was funded under grants versus what we're, what we're actually accomplishing with the movement here? Just so I have clarity too.
Sure, so the Health First Indiana, we will still be fulfilling all of our core service requirements. They did eliminate tobacco cessation, so that is the purpose. Primarily moving that position into a different fund will ensure that we can still provide those services. The services that we still in the programs that we will be providing under this funding include maternal and child health, trauma and injury prevention, chronic disease, so we're working on initiatives to address nutrition. We actually have a program that we're working on to be able to provide funding for fresh fruits and vegetables to qualified individuals, blood pressure monitoring to qualified individuals, so we'll still be performing those programs. We will just have to do it within the terms of these new requirements, which will include obtaining proof of Indiana residency in U.S. citizenship.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Wiltz.
Probably said something like this last week, but thank you for being attentive to this. As you know, I'm on the Monroe County Health Equity Council. I believe you're, you were there frequently as well and last night we discussed not only state legislation, but the, the big beautiful bill impact on a lot of these related services. And the fact is that, you know, we might not be seeing these impacts right now, but they're coming and they're, they're coming at us from multiple directions and it's going to be increasingly important that we facilitate these services locally in as best we can and that's going to require some support from the council, I think, as we move forward, so thank you, I'm happy to, to help you do that.
All right. Without any other further questions or comments, I will go ahead to public comment. So if you have public comment on this particular item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natie Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, Michelle, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard? Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one majority.
Thank you. And next up, we will go to item B. Or, sorry, item C.
Counsel, as a reminder, this is the second reading of this request. Due to the lack of unanimous vote at the July 8th meeting, I move to approve the Health Department's request to amend the salary ordinance in Fund 1159-0000 Health Fund to add positions as outlined on the agenda and in Fund 1161-0000, Local Public Health Services, to remove positions as outlined on the agenda. Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Ms. Kelly, anything you'd like to add?
Um, I don't really think so. I just, I think it's challenging, um, to kind of understand the depth of, you know, the impact of these changes, um, and how not only it's going to be impacting our community, uh, but the work that we're just trying to simply, uh, perform every day as public servants. Uh, so I, I do appreciate the, the support that we have received.
Yep. Looking to my right here, any questions or comments? Counselor Hogg?
Yes, just once again, I think, uh, when we're looking at trying to work around what we're going to do if we are, as we, uh, anticipate seeing less revenue coming in there, uh, for grant dollars from the state, we're going to be seeing that in a lot of departments. And so, uh, that's moving this over into that general fund, which is a part of the frozen levy, I keep calling it the frozen levy, of all of those funds. And so as we make decisions, and I know you've already made your, your decision, but, but let us remember that that's going to affect everybody, uh, and the ability to provide for county general because we're going to have to pull it from there. So, uh, I'm hoping that as you're voting for this, you've already taken that in consideration. And if we run short, when we get ready to do the budgets to, to do raises, that you will, you've made that decision that this is the better place to put it. So.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Deckard has his hand up.
Thank you very much. I, I just wanted to offer that, uh, I appreciate what Ms. Kelly said. I don't think everyone always understands about these services or these things that are offered, or what you all do, or what, what this happens. And I, I couldn't agree more with that. Um, I would encourage you, Ms. Kelly, and the Board of Health and others, and you think about what these services do, what the needs are, to communicate as clear as possible to the public, this does this, this does that, because right now, there's a lot of theoretical governing going on, theoretical, and hey, we might try cutting that, we might try adding that, we might try requiring that, and really not seeing it. Sometimes that happens in a classroom, sometimes that happens in, uh, national think tanks, sometimes that happens in the halls of Congress or the legislature, or when people are setting up bars, coming up with really good or bad ideas, take your pick. And I think telling the story of this is about people being taken care of when they're sick, and the Health Board, Health Board did a tremendous job with that during the pandemic. I think sometimes telling that story as clear as possible starts to take that theoretical and makes it real. So I just encourage you to do it as you can, and as you have time, because gosh knows, there's three million things going on for you all. So thank you.
Thank you. And looking over to my left here and seeing if anybody has anything to add. Nope. Okay. Um, so again, just to, as a clarifying question for our staff, because this didn't have a unanimous vote the first time, because it's amending the salary ordinance, just for clarification, um, we just need majority of council to say yes to this to go. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, and because we didn't have unanimous consent the last time, um, your staff, Ms. Kelly, had to go on pause for certain things. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct. We did have to suspend services. And again, um, I appreciate what Counselor Deckard, um, said, and we are working on communications that we can begin releasing to the public and very specific scenarios and situations that we run into with these changes to really help explain just the impact. Um, for example, I mean, we have, uh, individuals for real estate, um, uh, inspections who are not Indiana residents, um, that they don't meet this qualification. We have individuals who were born in Monroe County but are no longer Indiana residents. We cannot provide them their birth certificates. This is impacting us on every single level, and I don't think that there's a clear understanding of that. Well, what I had to do was try again to make the best decisions that we could to move around, to be able to sustain the services, uh, to the best of our ability that we can. Um, and there are still going to be some programs that do fall under Health First that were already established when we entered into Health First Indiana. The supplies were already purchased, those programs were there. We have to continue on in that. And there will be individuals that we will have to turn down for those programs and those supplies, and that's unfortunate, but we're simply trying to navigate this situation the best that we can.
Yeah. And I appreciate you saying that because I know and understand, I emailed you afterwards, um, to figure out like what happens with all of that. And so I know you had mentioned, looks like maybe 11 maternal patients that were actively enrolled, but the truth of the matter is, you're trying to do everything that you can because of what you have been given, and so I appreciate that. And I, you know, I keep reflecting on a lot of things that are publicly said during public comment of trying to invest in our community, um, in different ways. And I think, again, this is another way of, uh, you know, trying to invest and do what we can with the chips that we've been given because we know that big beautiful BS bill, um, is going to directly impact those of us here in the county. So I appreciate your efforts. So without further ado, um, and I will support that, period. Um, next up, we'll go to public comment. If you have any public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natie Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hogg?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one majority.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Turner King, I know we said we would try to move back. Is there any update on Mr. Falk?
I, I'm still trying and I'm afraid to look up his number again as my computer might make noise.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We'll keep pushing that back. All right. So, uh, next up is item number nine under new business, and we still are with the Health Department.
Uh, Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 9117-0000, Local Grants, the creation of account line 21050 Medical Supplies, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $2,720.26 in the Supplies category. Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Ms. Kelly?
Uh, yes. So the Health Department received grant funding for the 2021 and 2022, um, grant cycle, but all of these funds were not used. Um, so we did receive approval from the Cares Board to extend the date of the, uh, funds so that we could, uh, finish utilizing all of the funds originally awarded. Uh, so we are just requesting approval to be able to, uh, purchase supplies before the end of the year.
Yep. Pretty self-explanatory here, and I'll look to my left here and see if y'all got any questions. Seeing none, to my right here, it looks like Counselor Hogg has one. Go ahead.
Yes. Could you tell us what the medical supplies are?
Yes. So, uh, the grant was awarded for Sharps containers and/or Narcan.
The containers. And where are those containers going to be placed? I know there's some, some folks who said, oh, we really don't want them in the township, some of the people. So, uh, just for the public to know, in case they're interested where those containers might be found.
Sure. So, uh, with the amount of funding that's left, the intention is to purchase the smaller units, so we have those available at the Health Department that individuals, uh, can pick up.
Okay. So, so, uh, and any group or individual who might be interested i- in obtaining one of these, they can go to the Health Department to find it.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If you have public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natie Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
All right. Next up is item B.
Uh, Counsel, uh, I'm going to be grouping, uh, items, or never mind. I will only be, well, I think I am. No, I'm not. Here we go. Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 1159-0000 Health Fund for the creation of account 10181 Environmental Health Specialist General, and simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $51,728 in the Personnel category. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kelly?
Um, so I, I will say the purpose of this request, uh, again, is due to these legislative changes, um, and the requirements around, um, obtaining proof of Indiana residency and U.S. citizenship. Uh, the reason that you are seeing these separately, um, from the other 15 positions, again, is because, um, we were simply trying to look at all of the available options that we could to not, um, make a request to move all of the positions. Um, upon guidance from, uh, legal, we then decided that we, the best decision was going to be to request to just move all of these positions to different funding.
Thank you. And Counselor Hogg already has her hand up. Go ahead.
Right. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, uh, say that when I heard you say due to, um, legal citizen, well, how was it you put that? Because I don't think that's how the legislation was.
Um, for U.S. citizenship, so Public Law 215 is what I was, uh, provided with from, um, our county legal team, and I know that there's been a couple of different versions. The original version of the changes that we received from the Indiana Department of Health did have some changes.
What I saw, when I was reviewing the legislation, said that, uh, they needed to be here and, you know, with a legal reason. In other words, they could be a student, uh, and not be a citizen here, but they have the authority to be here, the legal authority to be here. And so if that's not, uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm sure I'm not saying that exactly the way the legislation said, but I wouldn't want anyone listening here to think that they were here legally, even though they weren't a citizen, if they're here legally, they can still, uh, avail themselves of the services just the same as they could before. I, I think that, and if that's no longer the case, I ask our attorney to correct me.
Turner King, please clarify.
I, I think the confusion is there are multiple versions of that statute. When we looked on LexisNexis, I know that, um, Mr. Roddy in our office was working with Ms. Kelly, um, and so I could follow up with him, but at this moment, I don't know that I have exactly what Mr. Roddy, um, supplied to Ms. Kelly. And, um, I, I'm not sure, just looking at it right now, I can differentiate why there are two versions of the statute in LexisNexis.
Madam President, I think that's essential, that we find that out, because we have a lot of students here, uh, who are not residents, who are not citizens of, of, um, the United States, and yet they have the right to avail themselves of services. So I just think that we have a lot of people who might be very interested to make sure, uh, if they can request services. And so I think that's something we need to be deciding and discussing before we put it out there that they can't.
Looking at council to see if anybody has any. Counselor Henry?
Thank you. And, and Ms. Kelly, thank you for providing the Indiana Department of Health memo on this, and it's in the packet. So, and maybe I'll just go back to Ms. Turner King on the question. So when I'm looking at the backgrounder, like on, on the, the document that's dated April 28th, 2025, first page, and it says background, and the sentence here says, and if, if I'm reading this right, uh, you know, IC 16-46-10-3, Section F, and it goes on to say, "Funds may only be used for Indiana residents who are lawfully present in the United States." But Indiana residents as a clause, right, and lawfully present in the United States, these are kind of two different things. Is that where, is that the confusion? Because Indiana residency, especially with the student population, right, i- it means something very different. And I mean, I don't want to muddy this anymore, but I, I appreciate that it's muddy. Uh, how are you reading that sentence out of their own memo? All right. Ms. Kelly, do you have an interpretation of that? I mean...
So, so part of our issue here is that it changed, um, and which further complicated this, and then we were running into issues saying, we have this huge student population, how are we going to provide for these students? How are we going to provide for all of these individuals? And it was because there was a, a separate information that came out that I get, did get from county legal. Unfortunately, I don't have that document right here in front of me tonight. I certainly wish I did, um, but, but I can provide that. But that's, that's the additional complexity that we've been just trying to simply navigate, uh, with how, how are we going to serve our community?
It could be, I mean, because it's, it's an ant, right? You could be lawfully present in the United States but not an Indiana resident.
Correct.
When we start factoring that student thing. Okay. Goodness. Okay, thank you.
I think they have to lawfully.
I'm not aware of the...
Ms. Turner King, do you need to interject from what Counselor Henry just mentioned or say anything else regarding that?
I, I don't, n- no. I, I don't, no, I don't need to say anything. Um, I did find an email conversation that I had with Mr. Roddy regarding Indiana Code 1646103, and we were comparing Public Law 213 and Public Law 230. Public Law 230 says citizens, and it was approved by the governor on May 6th. Um, Public Law 230 says lawfully present. It was likewise approved by the governor on May 6th, but expressly strikes citizens. And if you go to the Indiana Gov. website, though, it says lawfully present. So I think our interpretation is lawfully present is what the law is.
Thank you. All right. So without further questions or comments about this item, and I see Counselor Deckard just raised his hand.
Yeah, Madam President, I think that last part, uh, with Ms. Turner King was enough for me on this question, um, simply because it sounds to me, and who knows with what happened with the legislative session, it sounds like a technical correction bill or some other bill has superseded what has signed in drafts in that order. I don't know. Greater minds will have to figure that out. I do know this, and this is a concern that I have overwhelmingly, much like, uh, someone said to me during the pandemic when I said, you know, you got to be careful in a big public setting or even in private settings about disease. They said, well, you know, a private thing, uh, disease is not, uh, di- disease is not welcome there. And I was like, that is absolutely ridiculous. Similarly, in a community where we have so many people traveling through, and it's not just students, let me be clear, it's people that are driving semis, it's people that are coming to visit family. We have so many people traveling through, I worry that this multiple bills, multiple things, not really thinking about it, is actually going to put the public health in worse jeopardy. And so that's not the question for tonight, but actually, it's the question for the entire population moving forward. What, you know, wh- what do you do in these settings where people go where people go and they come to our community, uh, and are welcome? So I just, I, I'm a little alarmed that there's multiple versions of things. I'm going to assume that's a technical correction, but these things don't stop, and it's not just students that travel and come to our community.
Stan. All right. I'm going to go ahead and go to public comment. So if you have a public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natie Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Fidel?
Can I clarify what Molly just said first? So you said, because it, I'm confused about, okay, so I'm not the only one. So I'm confused about, there were three things that you referred to as far as the interpretation of the language, and so is it because two out of the three are sort of the same or...
And so is it because two out of the three are sort of the same, or?
I th- I think it's because, so Public Law 213 looks like it was first. And then Public Law 230, it specifically changed, um, it says lawfully present and strikes the citizen language. And then when you go and look at the Indiana.gov website, it reflects lawfully present. So I think our, um, thought process was that since 230 came later and that the Indiana Gov. website is ref- reflecting language consistent with lawfully present, that would be reflective of the law.
So what we're voting on is lawfully present. Am I correct in that?
I believe so, unless Ms. Kelly received other, um, advice from Mr. Roddy.
Uh, the last advice that I received when I was working on these documents was related to the 213, um, for the citizenship. Um, but.
So can I, since there seems to be confusion and, you know, you guys are still seeking, um, information, you could table this item to the next meeting?
So. Mr. Roddy and I had the email exchange on July 10th. Did he provide the 213 language prior to July 10th?
I don't remember the date. The date that, um, he provided the paperwork was when we met in person, um, in the office.
In the conference room?
Yeah, that was prior to July 10th.
Okay, so council, I'm going to look around to see what the temperature is for in terms of trying to interpret what's lawful status, what's not lawful status. And it seems like there is a, a confusion of some sort, and I want to make sure that we are making the decision based upon what we all know and understand. Does everybody, and I'd like to have folks that are, that have an opinion on this, state it soon, um, and make a comment of, is this, do you understand? Or what is the temperature of us needing to maybe table this to the next meeting, which is August 12th? Counselor Iverson?
I think, I think we should not table this. I think we have, uh, clearly, uh, have, you've talked, the Health Department has talked with, uh, legal, legals weighed in here. I don't think that the council needs to be weighing in on legal interpretations of recently passed code. I think that's beyond our purview. I think this move makes, uh, sense to me, and I'd like to move forward with the vote tonight.
Okay. Anybody else that wants to clarify anything else?
So what's the motion again? Let's clarify the motion again. What are we voting on?
Would, may I reread the motion?
Please.
I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 1159-0000, Health Fund for the creation of Account 10181 Environmental Health Specialist General and simultaneously approve additional appropriations of $51,728 in the Personnel category.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other clarifying questions or points to be made? Counselor Wiltz?
So not approving this, if we, if we did not move these positions into 1159, then by the Health Department's interpretation via legals' advice, that you would not be able to offer certain services?
Correct, without a, a verifying and obtaining this information and documentation.
So i- if that's the practice, then I think, okay, then I think I'm going to support it.
So then I will go ahead and proceed to ask Ms. Shell, can we please, uh, move forward with the roll call vote?
Counselor Fidel.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Henry.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hogg.
Yes.
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay. Thank you for all the clarification.
Okay.
Okay, uh, item C.
Council, I move to approve the Health Department's request in Fund 1159-0000, Health Fund to amend the 2025 Salary Ordinance to add account line 10113 Environmental Health Specialist Food, 35 hours, PAT-B, non-exempt, and account line 10181 Environmental Health Specialist General, 35 hours, PAT-B, non-exempt.
Second.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Ms. Kelly?
Um, I think this is just standard housekeeping item.
Right. And again, because this is amending the salary ordinance, and we've gone down this rodeo several times, if we do not have a unanimous consent from this council, then Ms. Kelly has to come back in two weeks.
That is correct.
Okay. So council, I want us to understand, a member of the public, if we want to keep playing the rodeo of going back and forth, we can do that, but we are wasting time of folks, of keep having to come back and forth, so.
May I remind you that each and every one of us have an obligation to come here to vote in the way that we think we should.
Of course.
And so if I was coming back now, uh, so I don't like being chastised for voting the way that I must. However, I intend that now that this is going to move forward, that as long as we all understand what the legislation says, and I think we've had enough discussion about that, it's not just legal citizens, they have to have lawful status to be here. I'm going to vote in favor of this, so let's just move forward. But I, I really, from now on, my votes, I do not want to have to apologize for voting. I won't.
Counselor Hogg, I don't think I was trying to chastise you, number one. Two, I don't think that I was also trying to have you apologize for your vote. None of us need to apologize for the votes or how we feel. Um, we are all respected electeds in our own right, and we can agree to disagree, um, and that's fine. I just want to make sure that when we keep getting in the habit of doing this, this is the result of what's happening. That's all I'm saying. So I'm not taking a side swipe at you or any other six other council members that have a vote. You vote how you feel, you vote how you will, and we know that you do that, and so does everybody else on here. So, anybody else have any other questions or comments related to this item? Okay. All right, so moving forward with public comment on this item. If you have public comment, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natute Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Henry is not present. Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hogg.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Fidel.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, six to zero.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Kelly. We appreciate that. All right, next up is item D from the Sheriff's Office.
Uh, council, I move to approve the Sheriff's Request in Fund 8103-0000, Operation Pullover, for an additional appropriation of $1,853.78 in the Personnel category. Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Mr. Miller is back, hello.
Hello again, Jordan Miller, Financial Coordinator, Monroe County Sheriff's Office. I'm filling in for my colleague, Ms. Yonkey. Uh, this is, as you can see, back-to-back items, housekeeping, uh, Operation Pullover is a, an, uh, overtime line that is paid initially from County General. And once the funds are received after the fact, after the quarter has ended, uh, those funds are essentially moved over to the appropriate, uh, in this case, Operation Pullover Fund. So we are requesting, um, the appropriation in this and the deappropriation in County General.
Thank you. And looking over here to my right, anybody got any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say that I, I saw much of this happening, and I appreciate it because I think this saves lives.
Absolutely.
So.
Thank you.
Anybody else over here to the right have any questions or comments? Nope. Looking to my left? Nope. Okay, uh, public comment time. Please come forward to the lectern here in the Natute Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have, oh, sorry, Ms. Turner King.
I can do the roll call.
Okay, can you please do a roll call?
Counselor Decker.
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much, and we'll move on to item E, also from the Sheriff's Office.
Council, I move to approve the Sheriff's Request in Fund 1,000-0005 County General Sheriff, the deappropriation of $1,853.78 in the Personnel category. Second.
All right, Mr. Miller?
Thanks again. Uh, as, as I just stated, this is the other half of the, the appropriation of Chirp Funds and deappropriation of County General Funds where they originated.
Thank you. Looking to my left, anybody got questions for Mr. Miller? Looking to my right, anybody? Nope, okay, so public comment time. Again, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natute Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg? Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is item F from the Aviation Department.
Council, I move to approve the Aviation Department's Request in Fund 4801-0000, Aviation Construction, an additional appropriation of $20,000 in the Services category. Second.
Got a motion in a second. Mr. Laverty, hello again.
Hey, good evening. Yes, we're requesting appropriation from the Aviation Construction Fund into our contractual line, uh, to support the, uh, a contract that the Board of Commissioners, the Monroe County Board of Aviation Commissioners, entered into with CTL Engineering to perform some geotechnical surveys on the west side of the airport property.
All right, looking over here to, I'll start online just to see if Mr. Decker doesn't have his hand up. Nope. Okay, he's shaking his head, no. All right, looking over to my right, does anybody have any questions or comments from Mr. Laverty? Nope. And I look into my left, okay, sounds like wrong, good, but we won't know until we take a vote. All right, anybody that has public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Natute Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hogg?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, on the agenda is item G from the Probation Department.
Uh, council, I move to approve the Probation Department's Request in Fund 1,000-0226, County General Probation for the creation of new account lines as set out on the agenda. Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second, and Mr. Williams is here from the Probation Department.
Hello. Before I begin with that, I do want to take just a moment to recognize that this week is Pre-Trial Probation and Parole Recognition Week. Uh, it's a national observation. The highlights the critical role that we serve in community corrections, and so I just want to personally thank all of our staff for the work that they do, and thank you for the support that you give our department. Now, with that being said, I'm here to request, uh, approval of account line creations in County General. Um, I think our department has been advising the council for quite some time that our project income, our Community Corrections User Fees Fund, is dwindling quickly. Um, and in fact, it would go into the negative before the end of the year if we didn't take some critical steps. Um, some of that was receiving the opiate grant to cover some positions. Uh, additionally, we have quite a bit of money left in our County General Appropriation from the retirement of a very longtime, uh, employee and then some other positions. And so we'd like to use that money that's remaining to pay some of the staff that would normally be paid out of project income and use that money up to help save some of the funds in project income. And that's why we're here tonight.
All right, thank you for that. Looking over here to my left, does anybody have any questions or comments? Counselor Wiltz?
Yeah, I, uh, have gone over this with you, and, um, and it's, it's a really, um, responsible way to go about managing this year's budget. I just wondered if you wanted to take this opportunity to give us a little bit of a peek at the next year's budget because obviously, something's going to have to change.
Yeah.
It's a V, the, you know, the shortfall in the fees. Did you, I'm just giving you the opportunity.
Sure, yeah, um, the project income, I mean, we're working internally to get, uh, fees raised, uh, collecting from clients. You know, we don't want to, you know, seem like bill collectors to our clients, but we want to, you know, collect as much money as we can. In addition to that, a lot of the project income, uh, expenses in the 100s are picking up expenses from grants. And we have talked about that. Um, I will tell you that our Community Corrections Grant was flatlined, that's the good news. Um, unfortunately, our Drug Court Grant lost over $20,000 coming next year from last year. And then in addition, I wrote down the numbers, over $6,000 for our Mental Health Court, and then our Pre-Trial Services Program was completely defunded in the Community Corrections Grant for next year.
When, when I say that it's coming from all directions, and I don't know, you know, I don't know how we're going to address some of these things. This is exactly what I'm referring to because, you know, there's a lot of important work that's done to keep people, um, ju- out of our, out of our jail. By, and this is a really key component, and we're losing a lot of money. So I just thank you for sharing that.
Absolutely.
Counselor Decker, and then I'll go down the dais here.
Thank you very much. I, um, I appreciate a couple of things here. Number one, money management alongside the council and in conjunction with the council, where our department has looked at what it could do based on the real circumstances they see around who's there, who's retired, who's not, and what do we need to do now to, to kind of take care of this. To go to Counselor Wiltz's greater point, we've said for years that for the county taxpayers to replicate everything that our grants and other good programs that these folks bring home, to do that would be almost impossible. And what's sad is about that, particularly is that Anthony read that list, is that the Drug Court recidivism numbers alone, that I can't do the stat right now, are huge. So as I listen to people today come in and talk to us about doing alternatives, doing other things, this really, really, really keys in with me is, um, we have done those things for a number of years, much like we funded, uh, Health Net was mentioned earlier, we, the county funds Health Net. We do a lot of alternatives, period, in the community, and we do have it coming at every side. So I ju- I want to offer that. I also want to thank Anthony and, uh, Ms. Brady for thinking through how we might get through this.
Thank you. Counselor Hogg, and then I'll go to Iverson.
Yes, uh, and of course, I'm not at all surprised that the Pro- Probation Department is, uh, looking under every stone you can to try to continue the services that you've had in the past. I personally think that we should do this all, uh, all of these movements of dollars should be a part of our budget preparation and decisions for next year because if we're doing it like one at a time, then when the people who've been, uh, patient and wait to come to us for their loss of grants and trying to figure out what they're going to do, we will have already made these decisions in advance, and there will be not enough money left to do all that we would like. So I really don't think it's a good idea to piecemeal it like this. So I really don't think it's a good idea to piecemeal it like this. I don't think it's a good idea. On the other hand, I want the services to go forward. But folks, we've got some tough decisions to make, and what we're doing right now is making the easy ones because we can just keep saying yes until we look at the bottom line and then we know that we should have said no to some of this and cut it back by half or cut it back by whatever. And bigger picture, when we finally get all of the numbers turned into the Auditor's Office and they turn it into us, we will see where we are. But to do something that might make us say to all the people that thought they were going to get a raise, I'm sorry, we just sort of gave that away because we can't cover all the grant losses, so we're going to make it up with the people who are still here. It would be so much easier if I just sat here and shut up and just say, you know, but it's not. I mean, we have to make tough decisions.
Indeed. Anybody else have any questions or comments over here? You have one. Counselor Iverson?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll keep it brief. Thank you for bringing this to us. I agree with Counselor Wiltz. You're doing the best with, you know, what you have, and I think this is a sound decision to be making. And I sat in a couple of these meetings as well, and clearly, this has been talked, you know, about a lot. And, you know, this is a preview of what's to come. We've got departments losing grants due to ineptitude, and then we've got the state government telling us that they're going to be cutting our property tax revenue. And so we, this council and councils all over in Indiana are stuck between a rock and a hard place. And it's just, it's really going to be tough in the next couple of years, and this is the tip of the iceberg. So I guess I'm thanking you for bringing this to us, but at the same time, this is what budget season's going to look like for the next couple of years.
All right. Anybody that has public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nighty Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
I don't see a fiscal on this.
Counselor Henry?
Sorry, it's not the point of information that you asked, Marty.
I don't see the fiscal on this, so, you know, I see on this next one, is it, is the next next item?
Right.
Is it to cover that? And if so, where's the fiscal information?
Okay, my understanding with working with Anthony is they've got enough money in their current budget to handle this change for this year.
Right. Yeah, but what they do for next year? And this is... Item G and H go hand in hand.
Yeah, they kind of go together.
This is creating the account line, and then H is what we are about to do next.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and so, like you stated, they've got some people that have retired, so they're not asking for any additional appropriations for the remainder of this year. So, I did not do a fiscal impact.
Right. I think what Counselor Hawke is asking about is just when you typically put the fund cash balance and the remaining balance available after the items for us, and this one just doesn't have it.
Well, that's because there wasn't any fiscal impact, and I don't, I personally don't do that. That's an auditor office item, so.
Okay.
I...
I thought we typically did it just so we would know, but...
I can get that information.
I'm happy to vote on this, knowing that I've seen, you know...
We've all had the agenda and everything long enough, and so we've all seen it, and we had any questions could have asked that. So, again, I appreciate the clarification, but again, I'm going to continue with the roll call vote.
Okay. And I do apologize for that.
It's okay.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Deckard? We may have lost him.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Deckard is not present. Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
And next up is item H.
This is a long one. Counsel, I move to approve the Probation Department's request and fund one thousand dash two two six County General probation to amend the 2025 salary ordinance to add account lines as follows. One zero five 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 probation officer slash case manager, thirty-five hours SOPO non-exempt. One one four two two probation officer, CASP pre-trial, thirty-five hours SOPO non-exempt. One one four seven zero CASP director, thirty-five hours SOPO exempt. One one four nine two pre-trial services program director, thirty-five hours SOPO exempt. One four two three six probation officer, CASP pre-trial, thirty-five hours SOPO non-exempt. And finally, one four three zero zero probation officer slash CASP pre-trial, thirty-five hours SOPO non-exempt.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, just to answer a question, we're looking at about eighty thousand dollars that would be spent or moved around category or in, within the category to cover these expenses, to kind of go down that route for you for the fiscal impact. Also, just wanted to say that the request that we're making tonight is outside of the grant thing. This is kind of just to keep us, our project income afloat. We were planning on making this request to the council regardless of the grant announcements that we got in the last thirty days, so kind of just to hit on that as well for you, Counselor Hawke.
All right, thank you. To my left, Counselor Fidel? Oh, I see in section G and section eight, there seems to be a disparity of numbers. One is one zero zero five five and one is one zero five five five, and I just want that clarified, whichever that is.
It would be one zero zero five five.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I would like to make that as a friendly amendment to my motion to change the probation officer case manager, which is thirty-five hours SOPO non-exempt. That should be account line one zero zero five five.
All right, and thank you, Counselor Fidel, for catching that. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions over here? Looking to my right, anybody have any questions? Counselor Hawke?
The eighty thousand, are you suggesting that's the difference it would be to finish out the year? Is that...
Correct.
Because when I see this list of employees that are being moved to County General, I know it's not eighty thousand for next year. So when you prepare the fiscal for us, I hope somebody will, let us know what the difference is going to be when you come to us with your budget, saying this is how much, how many employees you're moving into County General. And believe me, this will not be the only department who will need to be doing this. And so we need to look at not just what we're going to do for this year because once we've moved them over there, then they're there. Then we have an obligation to do something with them. So, I appreciate it, and I hate being the only person, and it's going to be difficult, but that's Marty Hawke. I ask questions and I make decisions.
I'm pleasant, Wiltz.
All right. Anybody have any other? Okay. Moving forward to public comment, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nighty Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Deckard is not present. Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, he's here. Oh.
Your camera's turned off.
Oh, there you are, okay, so Counselor Deckard?
You say yes.
Thank you. Counselor Wiltz? Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. This will require a second reading.
And this will...
Oh, you don't have to apologize.
Oh, sure. So this will come back to our August twelfth meeting. Okay, we'll see you in two weeks.
See you then.
All right, thank you. I am going to take a moment and take a five-minute break. So, or six minutes. So, I'm going to ask every last one of us to be here back on the dais by seven thirty so that we can resume and finish the business. Thank you. All right. We are going to go ahead and jump back into the agenda. Ms. Turner King had just mentioned before we took recess, or right at recess to me, that Mr. Falk has left the office and is unable to join us virtually, so we are going to work to get him back on the August twelfth agenda. So apologize for people that were here or waiting online. We thought that we would have him too, and so, not sure what happened, but we will work to get him on the agenda for August twelfth. So, now we go back to County Council business, which is item number eleven, and we will start off at item A with the Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, I would like to open a discussion regarding a letter to the legislature.
All right, and so I will look to Ms. Turner King to put up the letter here. If I might? Sure. And I was going to say, to, or we have two of our commissioners here, Commissioners Julie Thomas and Commissioner Jody Madeira. So we have that. And for anybody that is paying attention to, over the past couple of weeks, this is an ongoing conversation that stemmed from July eighth. And I know there's a revision from July, or from our meeting to now, and I've asked the council members to bring any things that we would like to have to, in terms of edits, anybody that has edits to come prepared for that. And so, now Commissioners, please proceed.
Thank you so much. This is all part of the process of getting the Justice Center built, including the new jail. Where we left off in 2024 is the County Council had approved the jail tax, which should raise an estimated two hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Justice Center design is proceeding, and some of you on the council have been meeting with us and department heads as we've gone over those facility design changes and trying to make it fit this budget based on the jail tax that's already been established. And we've been just moving forward based on that agreement and that outline of where we're at, that we have to build a justice facility. We have property selected, we have not purchased yet, but there's a purchase agreement. That purchase is not done yet, and you will be seeing that in the future. And what I've heard most recently are rumors and discussions and whatnot about, you know, there are questions from the council about the size of the facility and where the facility is and, and all of those kinds of things. And so I'm just putting it out there that I acknowledge that I've heard that there are concerns and questions. However, this, what we're here today for is this particular letter because as we were plugging along, our plan was to bring the bond issue to the council early in 2026, but the legislature's had other ideas, one of which, just for the public's justification, you all are aware of this, is a limitation on how much of the lit tax can be dedicated to a bond and the requirement that the council reappropriate, reauthorize local income tax annually, which makes a bond very difficult to sell. So, we came up with this, while we're working on speaking with key legislators in the state, we're working through this letter to provide sort of an introduction to the issue to legislators in various key committees and positions at the State House. Now, if you all want to have a discussion about the Justice Center, the jail, those kinds of things, President Crossley and myself had a conversation today. We can convene a joint meeting to have that discussion so that we're all back on the same page. I just, we're just here for the letter because we want to, we would like the legislature to restore those options that they've recently taken away from us. And if you want to have that discussion, I think we could have that joint meeting, and President Crossley was in agreement. But we should have it very soon because we do have a scheduled meeting, August nineteenth, with D L Z to move on to the next phase of design. And it would be better, if we can, to address these core questions or concerns before we meet with D L Z. So I'm not discouraging those questions. I'm not, I'm not taking anything away from anybody's concerns, but today we are here to listen to any revisions you may have on the letter. As you've noticed, we've already revised it. There are some other linguistic revisions that have not been reflected yet, but we've, it's down to one page, it's going to be down to one page. That was one thing that the TAM Capital Group had recommended we do, just to keep it brief so people read it in the legislature. But we also removed the special tax because it seemed to raise some concerns among council members, and that's fine. So we're here to hear any other revisions you may have. Ms. Turner King has graciously agreed to make those edits based on whatever we're hearing from council, but we'd really like to focus on the letter, sort of small picture, and if we want to have a joint meeting, big picture, I think we should do so.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I appreciate you clarifying because I think this could easily get into a much bigger discussion, and we should stay focused. So, I did want to though ask, April, I mean, August, what, at what time, meeting? Because I don't have an invitation or anything, and I did hear, I did hear about it. Like I did see something in an email about it maybe being in, and I just don't, I want to be there for it. Anybody know? Nobody?
So that was...
Okay.
No, 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 and I just want to clarify, Commissioner Thomas and Madeira, you and I, like, we spoke on the phone about having another meeting in addition to... Because I was confused about, I know we got the email about August nineteenth, which actually is our meeting of the County Council, whoa. Wrong place. Of the County Council, and so... I can't clarify that.
I, yes, I have been advised that that is the earliest meeting time we could set, but we need to meet as soon as we can with D L Z because any delay in meeting with D L Z delays our project further out than we'd like, obviously, but that, so it's not been set yet. I am sorry about that. I have mistaken, it is not set yet. It was the first, it was the earliest available time.
Got it, okay.
But we are going to be meeting soon.
Okay.
With D L Z.
Okay. And so, get him back...
I could safely say that.
Yeah, at the project at hand here, which is the letter. I'm going to start down to my right here to see if, I'm just going to kind of go down the line here, so I want to start with Counselor Hawke to see if you have any edits or anything that you'd like to add to this.
Yes. I will try to get them all in now.
Yes, um, I will try to get them all in now. Hopefully we got
Go ahead.
But I'll just start. Okay, uh, there's some things in the letter that I find to be factually incorrect. Uh, when it says with federal order requiring timely construction of a constitutional jail and justice complex, I do not believe that you're going to see that the um agreement, which is really um
Can you tell us where you're at in the letter? Can you do like first, second, third paragraph? Where is this?
Okay, it's uh in that first paragraph. I'm sorry, we we should really have it up there. Uh, it's in the first paragraph.
Yeah, okay.
And we acknowledge that we need to rewrite that for clarity.
Okay, because uh there's nothing in any kind of order that says uh that we are to be required to do a justice complex. Actually, the order has only to do with the number of beds. It doesn't say that we have to build a new facility. It just says, there's talking about the beds. Now, perhaps there is a more recent agreement. Uh, the agreement that I asked to see uh was not even signed and um
We'll revise that for clarity and accuracy.
Okay, and because the agreement that that I'm speaking of that wasn't signed was like what, back in 2012 or something? As county was the defendant, they were supposed to provide uh what they, what their plan was uh to the people of the class and the classes, all of the people that were in the jail at the time. And they, it was supposed to be posted in different areas of the jail. And then those comments were supposed to come back to the circuit court. And the circuit court was going to be, or maybe it might have said the criminal court or circuit court. But then they were going to look at that and review it, and then they would make a decision on that. And that then would establish the effective date of the original one uh of which we don't have any of that information or signed copy. So that to begin with was a little bit of concern because I think we should know what the signed copy uh tiles ties us to. However, uh the extension is over at what, is it like January or December of this year? I mean, it's just a few months, and then we're required to, that agreement will just go away. Uh, but um, at any rate, so there's no place in the order that says that we must build a new facility. Uh, and certainly none that says we have to have a justice complex. Um, and uh it could be, you know, perhaps just adding on more beds or having a separate facility or or for a few more beds or something. Now, I'm not saying that's what I'm in favor of, but I don't want to send a letter to the state where we're saying things that aren't even true. Um, and further, uh when it talks about the authorization to use uh the certain percent uh of the lit revenue, uh remember that along with that, that legislation said that um if if a debt was put on the income to be paid for with this income tax before 2028 that and if if the county council didn't put a a lit rate in place, the state would do it for us. So the the whole thing of saying we we have to redo it annually, that's just factually incorrect. I mean, I know that it says we have to redo the lit rate annually, but that is not true when it comes to a debt. Because the state made it clear, you put a debt in place, we will put in place a a rate to cover that debt. And so that part would make no sense. I would just like for us to make sure that when we send a letter to the state, at least we're staying with correction, correct information. And then further, I keep hearing somebody say, well, the jail tax, well, there's a correctional tax, but that correctional tax right now only brings in, and I should say only. I think it's about eight million and the uh uh economic development tax is bringing in, what, about uh eleven million, twelve million, something like that. So between the two, it's under twenty million. Um, and it's important, I think, for us to look at what our income tax uh revenue i- is expected to be, and we'll see that about mid-August. You know, we know, we're gonna know about that about mid-August. And so for us to say that we want to move forward with this, and yes, we can make this all work with with the dollars we have, we really need to know what the dollars are going to be coming in. Now, we also know the city has plenty of time, not plenty of time, but a little bit of time to go ahead and raise the economic development tax. I'll be shocked if they don't. It'll bring them in a little extra money for next year and the year thereafter, and then it'll go away because there won't be an economic development tax. But it won't surprise me at all if they do that for a two-year revenue boost. Uh, so that might change uh some of the dollars that we would receive as well. But I mean, it is our job to look at the revenue and the expenses and so forth. And so that's the reason why I think it's important for us to look at this and to look at the bed count. Uh, we have not, I do not believe that we've seen that we've hit that two forty, what is it, two forty-four mark that they have to, that the sheriff's department has to notify us as well as the courts. And then at at if they've hit the two forty-four, which I do not believe they have.
They've come very close.
And then uh two forty-eight uh for them to go ahead and start moving people out of the jail into another facility. Now, remember that that upper number does not include uh that number for the uh detox. So if you subtract, when you look at the numbers and you subtract the detox just for today and recently, you'll get your new number, but we're we're not at that number, so uh the 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 consent decree has to do with if we've hit that number as well. So how we plan to move forward, uh that's fine. But if we're talking about, we've been told by the state we've got to do X, Y, and Z, we ought to at least know what we're talking about.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Hawk, Counselor Henry.
Thank you, President. I think I'll pass. I'm kind of eager to hear what my colleagues uh have for edits at this point. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Iverson?
Uh, let me start out on the positive. Uh, I really like the edits have been made. Uh, that takes away out language that seems to make uh our colleagues in the state government uh as other than. Uh, this seems to be much more collaborative. Uh, so I think that's a very positive development. Um, and I I also think that uh, you know, I think the changes that Councilmember Hawk uh pointed out, uh I also uh wanted, you know, I had some of those changes as well. Uh, uh, Ms. Turner King, could you scroll down to the recommended? Uh, th- there were four recommended, there we go, yep, A, B, C, and D. Um, I, I'm gonna get back to something that I said earlier. I I'm fine outlining po- possible actions, in particular for possible actions. Uh, but I I do think that this is going to require us working with uh our colleagues uh at uh the Association of Indiana Counties uh to, so that they can have a look at this. Uh, because I I do think that this is going to impact other counties, which we indicate in this letter. Uh, and I I think that they're going to have additional uh options that could be available to uh to counties. And I I think that's going to be important to bring in partners. Uh, I I'm going, uh, I I think uh I would ask to be brief, which is hard for me, so I'll try and 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 adhere to that. Uh, I I don't, I am not ready to sign on this letter. Uh, I am uh very eager to hear what long-term finance is going to hear on August the first. Do I have that date correct? On August the first, which is next week. Um, and I think that's going to give us even more information uh that uh we we can uh have a better idea of where we're uh where we're gonna land on some of these uh revenues. Uh, so I I think that's, that's one of the things I'm waiting on. Senator Crossley?
Thank you. Going down the line here, Counselor Wiltz.
I would like to throw it back to the commissioners.
Sure.
Just
Oh, sorry.
That's what's been said so far.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Um, uh, I will uh be brief. I I've had a conversation uh with Mr. Borodoff with uh Association of Indiana Counties. And he said, well, why wouldn't you put in the letter that a special tax could be assessed? I said, I did, I laughed, I laughed. Um, I said, well, that's been an issue, so we had to take it out. Uh, but I don't want to send him this letter until you all are comfortable with it. Um, so you know, egg and chicken, I don't know when to do that. So if you all are right with me sending a draft to him, I will do that. But I don't even, I haven't even done that, but we did have a conversation on the phone about this these issues, and that was his suggestion.
He could have seen it in the, he should have seen it in the public. It was in the public packet today. He could have accessed it that way.
I'm su- I'm sure, but I
Yeah.
But I don't want to make his life diff- I would just send it to him on email.
Right.
I'm just, I, but I also don't want him to run with something that's not been approved. So I haven't, I haven't sent it to him yet, but we discussed the parameters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Madeira, do you have anything to add before I continue to keep going with Counselor Wiltz?
No, I think um I'm just taking notes and and um and I'm, I'm in agreement with um everything that I'm hearing so far.
Okay, all right. Counselor Wiltz, if you want to proceed?
Um, so I I agree with um my colleague's comments so far. And um in particular, I'm curious about the renewal thing, so I I hope that we're checking, we're verifying that because I took it at face value, which maybe I shouldn't have, but um if we could definitely figure that part out, that would be great. Um Yeah, and um Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a big improvement. Um I I have the same timing concerns of um, you know, letting people hear what we're saying, you know, not just AIC, although I definitely think that that talking with them is important, but some of these other counties um kind of just we work better together, I think, on some of these things. And at the risk of sounding facetious, I I'm not, I I would probably not say that they are unforeseen effects because I think that and
Okay.
I honestly, I think they're, they were very foreseeable. So it's almost insulting to say.
Okay.
But that's just my
That's good. Thank you.
Um, that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Vidal?
So I think um I would like to see when the letter starts out or somewhere pretty close, I like it in the beginning, where you're talking about um because SEA One's unforeseen effects. Okay, fine. But what is the language in SEA One specifically that you're referring to, that you want to work with, have, work with them on? You know what I mean? What is it that needs to be corrected or addressed with that language in SEA One? And I know it's hundreds of pages long. So the language, I think, the specific language that's at fault here, that this all needs to be addressed, is very important to me to put in the letter.
Okay. So to that end, um by making this letter one page, we're going to include attachments. So we can include that as an attachment with a highlight over the specific parts of the bill that are in question for us. And it's interesting because TAM Capital Group, our lobbyists, and AIC both see a annual reauthorization needed for the lit, so I'm not sure how we're all reading that same bill differently, but we will verify that. But we can add that as an attachment if that would be sufficient. I don't want to add more to the letter because we're trying to keep it under one page.
How much, how much is it that needs to be added? I mean, is it like three paragraphs or something? How much is the language that's the problem?
Well, I would rather take their language and highlight the the sections that we have concerns with and make that an attachment because we also have um, what were the other attachments? Now I'm, it's, I've slept once since then.
Uh, a schematic of some sort.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're gonna talk about the jail site. We are gonna the order. Thank you, yes. Uh, so we have a number of attachments for those who are interested in looking beyond the one page. That's what was recommended to us, instead of trying to add more language to the letter, make the letter brief, but include attachments for anybody that says what's the issue here. And so I like that idea, and if, and if that's okay with you, we can, we'll make a link. It'll be a digital letter, so we'll make a link. If they open that link, they can see what that language is.
So I guess I'm interested in having it be clear, so I'm unclear as to if you go to a link, would it just list just the language that you're concerned about that makes you come to this letter? Or is it gonna be the whole bill and you have to find it in there?
We'll, we'll figure that out. Uh, but but worst-case scenario, it's the whole bill with big orange highlight that'll just point out, here's an issue, here's an issue. Um, so you know, we just take sections of it and and put it together. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but we'll do it.
So do you think the language that we're addressing here that caused all the problems is in more than one place? Let me just ask that. So how many multiple places do we think it occurs in? Any idea?
Two.
Two?
Up to five or six because it's incorporated by reference to other sections.
Yeah. So I mean Yeah, that's true. Yeah, at least two could be half a dozen. How about that?
But once, but once you actually have that text, you only need to change it one or two places because it's incorporated by reference other, other places, so you wouldn't need to change those places. And uh, the question is whether or not you'd need to change other mechanics of the bill if these provisions were changed, because lots of times a bill is like a series of gears. And if you change one series of gears, you need to change other series of gears because you need to make sure that everything fits together.
That's exactly right.
And so, you know, that's why we're not happy about proposing language necessarily. We could have some uh options for language that might work, but ultimately, you know, Legislative Services, for example, would propose language that they
Is to define the problem.
Exactly. And so we could highlight the language that is problematic and say, you know, we know that this is problematic for the following reasons, and it could be fixed very simply, for example, for A, B, C, D. You know, Peters uh multiple solutions, Counselor Iverson's multiple solutions. Uh, but I think that um, you know, that that would be a an excellent way of solving the problem.
I mean, the the other option is to just present the problem, tell them the problem we're having and not propose a solution.
In some ways, we already had a plan, right? And so this whole SEA One just messed with everything that we had going.
Right.
So in my mind, a lot of ways, it, I think in some ways it is up to them to correct the problem because it's created a huge problem for us, and I don't know that we're the only ones.
I'm sure we're not, but we have to be how am I, I need to put this very tactfully. We have to be careful about finding sort of other counties that have projects because they may not be as fundamental as this project is. We have to be careful.
Yeah.
And we're not just gonna go out and say, hey, any county, let's join together.
Right.
That's why we're using our lobbyist group, TAM Capital, and also uh AIC.
Yep.
And they recognize that that's an issue as well.
Right.
You know, we're not building a casino in one county and a jail in another, right? I mean, it, I know that's not what's going on, but but we have to make sure that we find the right partners as we proceed, but in the interim, we're just going to go ahead and start having these conversations. So I think my question then would be, and I think we're open to either going either direction, is do we want to remove the options from the letter and just say, hey, here's our problem?
I would like to hear about that idea, honestly.
Oh, just remove it.
I mean, are you open to that?
Yes, that's, that's what I was
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yes.
And two out of three of us are here, so we can talk about that. I'm sure Commissioner Jones will be on board. She was gonna try to join us today and and could not obviously do so, but um, but she's, she's like, because we talked about that as an option earlier as well, so. So we're fine with that if that's what the council prefers. So that's why we're here. We just want to get your revisions.
I'd like to hear from my colleagues on that idea because I I'd like to hear from my colleagues on that idea, because I, I like that.
I'll go to Iverson next.
Thank you. I think that brings me to the very next sentence. And so it starts with, we'd be happy to meet with interested legislators. I think that's great. This is on Commissioner Letterhead right now, and I just want to make sure that council is involved in these fiscal conversations.
We can create Monroe County Government Letterhead, and on the left-hand side of the page, very small print, because we're trying to keep this one page, we can list all of the offices of everyone that's signing on. Okay?
That's great. I just.
And then, then it goes back in my mind to the timing issue, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So let me, let me, are you done with your edits?
I, I am done. I think we just needed to say that very publicly, that whoever the "we" is, is Monroe County Government's interested parties, Auditor's Office, or whomever's going to be there. Yeah.
Along those lines here, and I, and then I'm going to go to you, Counselor Henry. And looking at it, yes, I definitely agree with Counselor Hawke, because my understanding, and it looked like, to get an update of when this was extended, it looks like the last extension that I saw, that I was able to see was January 15th, 2024. So, and there's our hand raised. Mr. Ternking.
So there's an extension signed on December 30th of 2024 that extended it to January 15th of 2026.
So it's, it's almost right around the corner again. Okay. So now we got the answer on that. And then the other thing is, you know, if we're going to be doing this a little bit, like in a collaborative way, I think I would like to see, I know it lists, you know, Commissioner's Office, I would also like to see it list council office as well. And so from Commissioner President Julie Thomas to myself, I would like to see that as a collaborative effort in that regard, too.
Are you speaking specifically on the contact?
Yes, at the contact. Yes, that would be the thing. The other thing that I wanted to say, as another member of the Long Term Finance Committee meeting, is when we're sticking to this letter here, I guess, the one thing that I want to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Hawke was saying is that we really do not know our numbers right now. So my concern in thinking about this letter is, could we be putting something out into the universe prematurely before we know what is happening with the numbers? And because, one second, and then, because we have that long-term finance here on the first, and we're so, hopefully supposed to get it, you know, by the first, maybe by the middle of the month here, I think I personally would like to see and wait what those numbers are, and see what, you know, what our numbers are, what is projected, and then implement where we would be coming shortfall in regards to this. So that, that's where I am with the letter. And I know Commissioner Thomas, you got something to say.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that was a question I actually had for all of you, because it was mentioned before. But it's, it's not, so we had a plan. We were moving forward.
Sure, right.
And then the legislature acted. And they set up two obstacles, essentially, to continuing with our plan progressing. And so whatever those numbers are, those two obstacles exist. So I hear that you want to have numbers, but I think, I think we may want to be more general about, here's the problem with the legislation versus here's how we're going to attack it, here's our numbers. You may want to have the numbers before you okay this letter. That's fine. But I'm not sure we want to include numbers in that letter. I think what we're saying is you have erected two obstacles in our path. Here they are. Here's, here's the issue for us. And we would like you to address this as early as possible in the 2026 legislative session. Whatever our numbers are, they don't, they don't need to worry about that. They've set up obstacles that we need to, to get corrected. Does that make sense?
It does. But I think, I think it could be a yes and, like a yes and, we could highlight, obviously, like the moral of the story is, it sounds like we just want to go back to what it was, you know, pre all of SB 1 conversations, so that we would be able to do what we need to do. But I do think that there is, at least for me personally, is something to say of, you know, here's our shortfalls. We don't have to, I, I guess, like an estimated amount of shortfalls, and then highlight, you know, the problem that they have caused with this, and how we can proceed to go forward. That, that's kind of what I was looking at.
Okay, that's fine. We're good, we're good with this. Whatever, it's fine. Or we could, if you don't feel like you can estimate the shortfall, we can leave things as they are. Obviously, you all have your own information seeking you wish to do. And I get that, and that's a very difficult task in this environment, legislative environment. So it may be that you, I, I would be fearful of not getting this letter done, because we don't have enough data. And that data may be something that doesn't address that obstacle anyway, right? And so, you know, I'm certainly not suggesting, hey, let's vote on this tonight. I'm not asking for that. We're not asking for that. But I, I fear that if we continue to say, oh, we need this information, we need that, we'll never get the letter done. We need to move forward as quickly as we can, given the parameters of when you have public meetings.
Right, got it.
So that, I'm just throwing that out.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time again. I, I think that's where I want to drill into is on the process piece, because I'm looking at a calendar. I'm trying to figure out the, the sequence of meetings. And, and what I'm hearing here is, we don't have an iteration still, which means we'd have to come back and talk about an iteration of the letter again at some point for council's consideration. Our next meeting's the 12th, right? So there's 28 days between the DLZ meeting on the 19th and where we are right now. So I just looked at the calendar here. The Long Term Government Finance meets the first.
August 1st.
We meet again on the 12th, DLZ's the 19th. And.
Maybe, maybe the 19th.
One would help, yeah. And so, so there's, you know, that's a good amount of time to work through where we are, wherever we are in iterations. And so I'm, I'm kind of concerned about a process of how we get there, so we don't have to kind of keep doing this version of it, where things are sort of, you know, I don't want to treat you all like, it almost looks like short-order cooks at this point. Like, we've ordered up a lot here. Maybe we can kind of nail this down in a working group meeting of, of a core of us to get this addressed. And, and the reason why I think that maybe a working group scenario is maybe best between now and that 28 days is, I agree with Counselor Wiltson being triggered by unforeseen effects, but I heard it differently. And I heard it, maybe, I would like to hear how TAM thinks about that, because I'm not sure they are unforeseen effects. The legislature's will was to really emphasize an SB 1 tax reform. It may be belt tightening that they were sending the message out on. I'm not sure of that, but I'd really like to hear a lobbyist view on that, if, if they feel that, or however TAM is interpreting it. Yeah. Commissioner Madira, do you have a view on that, if it's very intentional, or, or, so I, I mean, I'm happy to stop my flow here if you have a comment, yeah.
That's a, that's a yes and question, as, as Counselor Crossley mentioned before. And the, what we had from the lobbyists was that absolutely yes, TAM said, the effects were to absolutely force local governments to, to belt tighten, and perhaps in very uncomfortable ways, and perhaps in ways that are unrealistic, because very few legislators have had local government experience, unfortunately. And I do think that they recommended, they did not say, oh, yes, include unforeseen in the letter, but they thought that this particular type of project was unforeseen, because they didn't intend to trip up compliance with federal orders. In other words, they didn't intend to trip up compliance with counties trying to build jails. Or, and I think the state government would actually love for more counties to build jails. And provided that they could do so on a budget. And that seems to be something that Indiana Counties, you know, Indiana State wants to encourage counties to do. And in general, that's not something that our county is particularly enthusiastic about doing for a number of reasons, as we heard earlier tonight. That doesn't mean that our county doesn't need to do it for a variety of reasons, to protect our staff, and to comply with a federal order, and frankly, to take care of our inmates in a constitutional fashion. But I think that, you know, in terms of this particular consequence, you know, to trip up us or counties trying to comply with a, a federal order, and we're not the only county under a federal order. Allen County was, I believe, as well. They're just one step ahead of us. They bonded in November of 2024. And so I don't think, that's, I think, what was unforeseen. The other thing that our lobbyists advised was to sort of have a soft intro, that we don't really want to accuse them of purposefully inserting difficult, purposefully difficult things for local governments. Belt tightening is one thing, but sort of obstructing the processes of government might be another. And so maybe the different word, a different wording might be there, but I think that the tone is what we were trying to get at. But I think we can absolutely massage that into the letter in a different way.
Yeah. Commissioner Thomas.
I just want to add that in my conversation with David Barteroff at the AIC, Association of Indiana Counties, he essentially said the same thing. So.
Well, I guess my point on this is that we're, we're kind of relaying things. It's like a little shuttle diplomacy here, where I really feel like sticking all the partners at a table on a work group to, to, I mean, including bringing TAM in the room, or if we could get, yeah, hopefully, if we can get a Gertas here, it might be helpful. But and I feel like there's time in our calendar. I, I'm going to just maybe, maybe wrap up my thought on this to say, you know, one of the challenges I have, and I think something a work group could work on, is, and this is not anyone's fault, I don't fault DLZ for what I'm going to say here, is that in the project management world, this has been overcome by events. That's the term we would use to describe what we, what a council previously decided a year ago, how, how the election hit, how SEA 1 hit. Some of this has been overcome by events. We're trying to figure that out. I think, again, we could do this every Tuesday, every other Tuesday. But I, I feel at this point, again, my focus is on process, if we can maybe agree to get a working group in a, in a public space, bring TAM in, bring whoever we think needs to be in the room to really go line by line on this. It might be a better use of our time in the next 28 days.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, we're amenable with that. I'm going to be, I'm, I'll be available.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, I appreciate that. And.
Should I make a motion to that effect?
You know, I, so, do you all want to care to elaborate, or is there any? Okay. So, you know.
Madam President, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
To form a working group of members of county council, county commission, if the council commissions are amenable, and relevant partners to meet in the next 28 days to iron out the, to amend the language of the letter in a, in a public space, for date and time to be determined by mutual agreement.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. And to clarify, that is to create a working group of council commissioners and other partners, which such as TAM and others. So any.
Might that include AIC?
Would other partners be sufficient, or do we need to?
I don't know. I don't want to leave anybody out that would be relevant. So relevant is kind of vague to me.
I think we could list.
I agree.
So maybe other signers as well, is, because, you know, it could be invited.
Only the signers, yeah.
Sure.
This motion's getting along.
And I, I would just ask that we do this so that you all have something to vote on on the 12th, because I don't really want to wait past that meeting if that's all right with all of you.
I think we have two weeks to pull it together.
Laura Iverson?
I was going to point out that the creation of commissions is generally a commissioners'.
This would, this wouldn't be a commission. It's a working group, and that's.
Heard, thank you.
Committee. You can call it a committee if that works.
Excellent.
I don't want to do that.
No.
Because if we call it a committee, it's almost like, it's kind of like what we did with JFAC and CJRC and those things, where we have to do.
Can we, can we call it a working group, a, a temporary working group?
I don't think the name is what matters. It's if you're being appointed. If we're formally forming that group, which, since that motion did, I think we're applicable to open door.
I don't, I'm not worried about open door. I'm just worried about holding up this process. Like, this is, I don't want us to get mired down in who's appointed and who's not, and we can't appoint until your next meeting on, you know, August 12th. And how do we proceed expeditiously and legally?
Well, since it's an actual group, there's a quorum, open door. And if you're going to communicate with more than a quorum of how many people are on this committee, then it's going to be done in public. And so I, I, I don't, my suggestion would be, I understand that you want to have this conversation with relevant stakeholders, but I, they shouldn't be on the committee, because then you're going to have a giant committee and quorum issues and everything that goes along with large committees. I think it should be a committee of council and commissioners with the invitation to those stakeholders to participate in the conversation.
Okay.
It's a point of order, then. I'm happy to rescind by motion and allow council or to, to maybe state it in a manner in which would be acceptable and accept that verbiage as, as, as so moved. Does that make sense?
I can do that, I think.
Can you say it in a manner by which I can say so moved?
Before I get there, I do want to add one statement to this timeline conversation. I did have a conversation with the presiding judge earlier today, who did state that the Board of Judges had discussed the possibility of signing on to this letter, and they're open to the idea. They would just need to have the final draft to send to their judicial counsel in Indianapolis to see if they can sign on to it ethically. So the letter has to go to Indianapolis for judges' consideration for signature.
I appreciate that the Commissioner has an urgency, but I think that's part of this. If we want to be one voice, we really need to use the full 28 days, Madam President. So I'm happy to rescind my motion if county attorney has a more grammatically appropriate way to put it.
So I think the language would be, you proposed a motion to create a work group of commissioners and council members to formulate or edit the letter that will be sent to the legislature and encourage participation from interested stakeholders.
Just like sure, but so moved. Yeah. And I, still second.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
So now we're talking about this working group. So let's say two of the three commissioners attend. Does that have an open, does that have a quorum issue?
I think once the committee is formed, which it sounds like it just happened, that that committee itself now must comply with open door.
Is its own. So the.
Yes.
Our, our group, however many there would be.
It's similar to like LTF. So when there's an LTF meeting, the quorum is two, because LTF is a body of three.
Okay. All right. So it wouldn't matter how many are coming from each group that attends and their own quorum issues, right? That's my question.
What we could do is what we do frequently on LTF, which also denotes that it's possible quorum of council or commissioners will be present.
Okay. I would, I would like to amend. And Peter's amenable, too.
That is amenable to me.
Okay.
So I don't think I have any more questions.
Okay.
I'm going to call the question in.
Was that a motion? I'm over here typing, and I'm really confused. I'm sorry.
Yes. So would you, Counselor Henry, like to restate your motion for clarification again?
All right. I have a motion, Madam President. The motion is to convene a working group of a, a number of commissioners and counselors to draft this letter to the legislature on the effects of SEA 1 on the Justice Center project. It will model the way we do the Long Term Government Finance Committee in terms of form and structure, to meet in, in public in the next 28 days with additional signatories, such as the Board of Judges, for the completion of this letter.
And I seconded.
Okay.
And that second remains.
There was some discussion about August 12th, right? Is that 28 days?
Really would like.
If we get the Board of Judges, we can. I mean, it's kind of, we just heard that their timeline's on.
Well, I, but for you all to vote. Well, I, but for you all to vote on it on August 12th would be ideal, because then they can make their decision, right?
Let's get the commit, let's get the working group.
I know.
So ideally, for all of this to happen, that's, that's a lot of work in a short timeframe. And, and therefore, in order for all of this to happen, then we need to convene this, make it move, make it happen, so that we can have them discuss, have them send it to their prospective people, and then come back to August 12th meeting with anticipation of being able to all be on board. Got it.
I, I, I'm just going to say that your decision as a council to support the letter or not may or may not impact the Board of Judges' decision. But I would hate for you all to wait on them and them to wait on you, and nothing gets done.
What about the Sheriff, Steve? Yes, and that's, that's, that's the biggest thing, and that's was. Part of the defendant.
The sheriff is on that list.
Right.
Signatories such as.
Yes, so we would basically go the same way of, you know, that's just trying to invite them, not be a part of it again, to make the quorum issues and whatnot. We just want to have a working group between our bodies and then invitations extended, so we don't get into committees of the past with quorum issues. So, yes, Council, oh boy.
I have not promoted.
Ms. Turner King.
So for, I guess, a clarifying question. I think it would be beneficial to identify who is in this working group. And my clarifying question is, is there any one on council who's not going to be in this working group? So rather than form the separate committee, is it just another, a special joint session of the two bodies to work on it?
That's an easier motion.
Yeah.
And then.
I'm just trying to get it out of this meeting and into another space.
Yeah, it sounds like you just need to have a, my recommendation would be a special joint session of the two bodies, because I don't imagine any one of the commissioners is not going to be in the working group, and vice versa for council. So you're forming a special committee of yourselves.
So.
A working group of ourselves.
Okay, all right. So then, if that is the case, then we have to look at schedules. If the idea is that we want to do this by the 12th of August, then that doesn't give us a short timeframe. My time is actually going to be limited, because I'm going to be unavailable for a number of things that I have going on. But I'm just one of seven. So if it is the will of the council to try to reconvene, have a special session, you know, I really was trying to not have, you know, another meeting to go over, you know, something like this. But again, and if that's the will of the council and the will of commissioners, then that's what we will do. Then that's what happens. So.
Send your motion.
We would need to have a, a rescind of motion, because we don't want to do the working group, and instead just call a special session.
I, I mean, I'm happy to withdraw the motion. I'm just, again, but the spirit of this is trying to get it into a space where we're only doing this, and we bring in the expertise, and we're not shuttling between lobbyists and AIC and everybody else.
And coming back in meetings.
Because we're not there yet, so.
So we also, again, when we're doing this, we also have to think of, we have staff that we have to include in the mix in terms of timeframe in this too. So we need to make sure staff would be available to staff these meetings. So there's a lot of shuffling, a lot of schedule looking that will need to happen as a result of this, so. So I'm going to say, I'm just keeping this train rolling here, that we will work with the commissioners and council office and all the powers that be to have a special session of this conversation, so we can kind of, and obviously invite, you know, the signatories such as the Board of Judges and the Sheriff's Office, or the Sheriff, as well to, to keep this going. Commissioner Thomas.
And we will make anything work to make this work. My, I had also at the outset asked if we all wanted to have time to get together to reestablish where we are on this project as a whole, separate from the letter. So it would be the same meeting, hopefully, but in two very distinct parts. My, if, if that's what you all want to do.
I think that would be ideal, for us to do that, because we have budget coming up on the horizon, and August will be here before we know it, and it will zoom through. So again, I'm also, I know that, you know, we're needing to do what we can, and y'all are needing to do what we can for collaboration or whatnot. But I'm looking to staff as well, because they're going to have to be a part of these meetings, and that's another added meeting to a lot of things. So just want to make sure that we are using our time wisely when it comes to that. So I would be in agreement with having a special session and then the other meeting with, you know, to talk about the scope of the project. So that was a long way about going about that, but it was a conversation that needed to be had, and we appreciate that. So.
So for clarity, you're looking to schedule a meeting to discuss the Senate letter and the scope of the jail project?
Right.
Okay, you all will receive a doodle poll in the next five minutes.
And so we need to have a timeline on the doodle poll, and so that staff is not trying to hunt down everybody to figure that out. Let us make sure that we are being attentive to that doodle poll. Let us, let us commit to doing that as soon as it comes out, so that we can schedule this stuff accordingly. All right. That is all I have to say about that.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
That also gives us time to check out important answers on the questions you raised, Counselor Hawke. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Still moving on the train of the agenda here, we are going to go to item B from the legal department.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2025-30 authorizing payment for council member training from the Elected Officials Training Fund.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second and a yes.
And a vote.
Uh, Counselor. Oh, it's okay. All right, Ms. Turner King, we are looking to you for item B.
So this is a resolution that we have similarly approved in the past to allow payment for attendance at AIC conferences by council, counselors and council staff out of the Elected Officials Training Fund. The, I did, I'm trying to display it, but I'm switching gears. I changed the resolution slightly from the one in the packet, because I failed to accurately reflect a number in words. And so now it says 577, which is what it's supposed to say.
Thank you. All right, any questions from council related to this item? Looking to my left, looking to my right. See who's not here nice. All right. We'll take public comment. If you have, if you state the course here and have public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nighty Hill Room, or graciously raise your hand via Teams. And seeing none, we would need to have a, can we do this by voice vote, or no? Because Trent is, he's left the building.
The resolution, I apologize. We need a, a roll call vote.
Okay, well, in that case, can we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Fidel.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke. I'm sorry.
Bad chance.
Oh, okay, sorry. Counselor Henry.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. And then, nearing the end of this, we are going to go to the 2026 Council Budget Review. It is just a review, and so I want to give Ms. Kim Schill an opportunity to go over that. Obviously, this is not the final budget, but this is what we usually do on an annual basis. So Ms. Schill, take it away.
Share my screen, so. Okay, so this is the request that I am making for 2026. And this is just to give you a heads up, this is what we're doing, this is what you're going to see. And then if you want to make any requests to, like, lower, you know, raise, whatever, but this is your opportunity for me to make these edits on your behalf before we go to budget sessions. So, so the, you will see that the, the increase of the salaries is, you know, due to the COLA that council approved earlier this year. And so with that, there is the new hire transfer, and you'll see that is because that's due to the current person that we have, Ms. Lahua here, is at the one year or at the minimum. And so for next year, she'll be moving to the one year. So that's why there is a, a jump that you will see because of that. Also, you'll see, you see a decrease in the longevity. That is also because of, we have a policy in place where a person that is hired after, I believe it's November 1st of 2023, is no longer eligible for longevity. So she is not eligible for that, and so this is just my longevity amount that you'll see here. The office supplies and printing copies, as you can see, for 2024, I've already hit, at June 30th, this amount right here is $542. That is due to, we've had two new counselors come on, so I've had to purchase new nameplates and, and tags and this kind of thing. I also have a, a, a new person as well in the office and this kind of thing. So we've had to, you know, do more office supplies and this kind of thing. I have yet to spend the printing and copying supplies. I normally do a, it's, it's just fallen this way where after June, we buy paper for the office, that kind of thing. So the dues, we've only done $300 out of the dues for this year. I'm still expecting an invoice later this year, so that's why we're still, we still have an amount there. I kept that the same. I don't anticipate any increases in those dues. The contractual amounts, you will see a, a drop with regards to WIS at the end of this year, and that's because we have a pause in the pack. But I went ahead for 2020, 2026, kept the contract amounts for WIS at 30,000 and FSG at 30,000. Professional services, we've only just barely spent, just a little bit out of those. We didn't spend any this year. I would have normally, but that would have been with Kip May taking pictures for the council. We didn't do that this year, because the Commissioner's Office covered that entire amount. Uh, training and travel, I think we're doing pretty good. We're going to, that is the June 30th, and it doesn't include the June totals that, for the state called meeting, so you'll see an increase in that. But it looks like three, 3,500 will be fine, you know? Depending on what's going on, since we have Ms. Lahua here, she, she's going to be attending a lot more conferences. So I'm going to be getting her out there and, and doing that kind of stuff. Office expenses, that's where it's the, the services for anything that we have. So which would be the services for, for an example, when we do the nameplates and stuff, they charge us labor, you know? So that's where that stuff comes from. Uh, community services, so that is our Sophia Travis grant. We received information from the state that the maximum levy growth quotient will be 4%. So I took the 174 for this year and multiplied it by 4% and then rounded it up to the nearest $1,000. So that's an increase of 181, $181,000. I'm increasing the postage this year, and that's due to the higher amount of the postage line, postage increase for first-class mail. Uh, legal notices, I kept it at $100. We've had, been a hit and miss with regards to legal notices for Sophia Travis. Sometimes we do a public announcement, sometimes we don't. So we, you know, kind of thing. So one year with Cheryl, we did it, and one year we chose to try and do an email blast. Well, you know, so we're just kind of, still kind of a hit and miss with that. And then with the BEDC, I left it at 35, 750. That's what we budgeted for this year. And then that ARPA rural housing repair, that was that incident where, at the beginning of the year, the commissioners wanted us to fund the repairs that they could not get contracts on. So of course I left that one blank, so.
Okay, thanks, Michelle, for that. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Counselor Iverson?
Uh, oh, you took it away. Um, I think, I've said this before, but I do think that professional services and contractual are redundant categories. Uh, we could probably get rid of one. Uh, I think most departments don't have both.
That is correct.
But I mean, we're talking about a difference of $400, so I don't know if that's really that important.
I could add and forward, it'll just always be contractual.
Okay.
And then if, if we find out we don't use it, it'll, of course, it'll revert, but if it, if it's something we're not going to be using moving forward, if the commissioners are going to continue to cover the cost of elected official pictures, then we may not need it moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or, you know, Mr. May can give us a one paragraph contract and whatever. Uh, the other thing is, I'm going to channel our dearly departed council member, and I think that community services could go higher. Uh, I don't have a number in my head, but I just think it could go higher. And then the last thing is, I'm just going to say, I, I don't have any, I don't think we're really going to do this, but I think that we get paid too much. I'd like to see our amount of pay go down. But we'd have to adjust the elected official salary, so.
Yes, that would be, it was very painful to set an elected official's grid. And so I personally do not want to see any changes to that.
I am not advocating that we change the elected official's grid. I just, I, oh, that number is just, I just want that number to go down.
Anybody over here? Go ahead, Counselor Wiltz.
We don't really need any pictures next year. Action, so can we just get rid of that?
We can get rid of it.
I like having my younger picture anyway.
Counselor Hawke.
Oh, I've noticed I haven't changed a bit in the last. Did you know how that happened? I even had on the same outfit, same haircut.
Amazing.
I don't know what else to add to that. Anybody else? Uh, yeah, I would like to, I'm concerned about Sophia Travis this year. And I think because of much of the public comment that we heard today about funding and people and, and grants and all of these things getting cut, I think we're going to see a, a need increase for that greatly, especially this, our job for Sophia Travis is going to be real hard this year. I'm just going to be honest. And for the following year, because of all the aftermath that will come from that, that's a concern for me as well, where we might have to tell agencies no, and we might have to be very meticulous and very careful of who we give money to. And that will be the first time in a while. Again, I know we can do hard things, but this obviously speaks to, you know, how we find our values. And so I definitely. And so I definitely would like to see how we could. It's food for thought to think about. Um, but I would like to see that increase. I know, you know, Counselor Munson, when she was a part of it last year, I made a comment about how we could increase that. But I, again, like Counselor Iverson said, I would like to see how we could do that. So just putting that out there.
Well, we can, I mean, if somebody wants to give me a number, I mean, this is not set in stone. So if you put the number on there, you can always change it during budget sessions. So thi, thi, this is your recommendations for your budget.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I, if memory serves, um, Counselor Munson often talks about how this fund should start to approach 250, if I remember right. Would it be, given the circumstances, the state and federal level, inappropriate to suggest that number for this year, given what's going on in the community?
I support that.
So 250,000, okay. So Counselor Henry has said 250,000, Iverson has supported that. Looking at other council members to see their thoughts on that. Again, it's not set in stone, but it is a number that we can put out there and roll with. And then come budget time, after we've digested a lot of things, that's something that we could talk about as well.
I think it expresses the clear intention. Right, and I think it's important to do that.
Sure, understand.
Anybody? Bueller?
Um, that's, I mean, it's not committing, and I don't know if we can do it, but, um, heck, I'd throw everything in there if I could. I do have a question, though?
Yes.
Or?
No, go ahead.
I mean, it says community services on it, and I know that's embedded in the grant. But is that, is there a reason it's called that? The line is?
That was the line that was committed a long time ago before the fund was changed to Sophia Travis. What I can do is run a report to see if anybody else is using that line, which I doubt very much. And if there isn't, I can make a request to the auditor's office to have that name changed.
Only if my colleagues feel like that's.
Okay, and that's an easy thing to do.
I just think for clarity, it would.
I would agree.
I'd support that.
I, I would agree, and I also support the intent of going forward with the 250,000. Again, not setting that in stone, but definitely something that we can start to look at and think about and have a, a taste for, so I appreciate that. All right, any other questions or comments related to the council budget as presented by Michelle? And this is also a good shameless plug to say, for anybody who needs to have their budget turned in, um, Monday, the 28th is when everything needs to be turned in. So staff is working really hard to make sure that we got, you know, all things done. So any departments that are still watching or will watch this on replay, uh, please make sure that you have your budgets in as of Monday, July 28th, so that we can proceed to move forward, um, because budget season is upon us, so. Thank you. All right, it is the favorite time of the night, which me, and you, oh, sorry.
All right, um, I need to make a request.
Yes.
I need to make a request with regards to, uh, the Sophia Travis committee.
Ah, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, and this is, um, so we can change the calendar. And so I'm going to pass this down, this, sorry. So what it is, currently, the calendar reflects, and let me see if I can find it. So currently, uh, the Sophia Travis calendar, uh, timeline reflects, uh, October 28th, the coun, the council will approve, you know, see and approve recommendations. On the 29th, uh, we prepare and forward contracts to the agencies. On the 14th, November the 14th, is the deadline to submit those contracts to the council office. December 4th, then those contracts are submitted to commissioners for approval. And then after that date, which I'm, you know, I'm guessing on one part, December 10th-ish, they sub, we submit those claims to be processed, and the distribution of those checks will happen in the middle of December. Molly Turner King, uh, said, "This is not the process that the commissioners use with regards to the CARES grant recipients." So if we change to how the, uh, commissioners, um, do their grant recipients for the, um, uh, their grant awards, what would happen is the, uh, checks would be out and to the recipients by the middle of November, rather than the middle of December. So, which means the, uh, we would submit the contracts and the claims simultaneously to the commissioners for approval. Then at the, at the November 13th, we, uh, advise the, uh, recipients to attend that meeting. When they attend that meeting, they would sign the contract and pick up a check at the same time. And that's what they do for the CARES people. And then on November the 20th, following that, once the commissioners have signed off on the contracts, award recipients would receive an executed contract. So this will give them their checks way ahead of time.
Counselor Wilts, sounds a question?
How many CARES grant recipients are there?
Oh.
Approximate. Relative to Sof, Sophia Travis? About workload and number of people in a meeting?
Um, so I just looked at the 2023 recipients, because I couldn't find the 24 one. And it looks like there's, of course, they're all individual. One. The agenda request is like 11 pages, so there's quite, quite a few recipients.
Oh, okay. Wow.
Okay. So, and I think the way that CARES works is that they collectively approve the contracts as a group. So it's not like, they read the list similar to like we do in Sophia Travis, where it's like, agency such and such will receive this amount. They collectively approve the agreements.
Got it. Else have any questions or comments related to what was just presented? Okay.
I assume that we have a meeting on the, on November, like, when is our meeting relative to this? Because they usually come to our meeting. Are we saying they're not doing that?
No, they would still come to the council meeting on October 28th.
28th, that's when Sophia Travis will present their recommendations to you for approval. And then after that, it's out of your hands. It all goes to the commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, so I see this as a better smooth on and process to help try to get everything done in one swoop. Do we, so it sounds like we need to have a motion? Okay, and I see it not hit, and I'm looking to us to, oop, I see somebody pulling a mic in, and you are going for.
I, I mean, I, I love to be needed.
Let's go.
Counsel, I move to approve the amendments to Sophia Travis Grant Committee calendar as portrayed on the screen.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any additional questions related to the motion?
I have something. So now that it's going to the commissioners, are they aware of this?
Uh, we have spoken with Angie about, uh, Angie Purdy, the, uh, commissioner's administrator, and she was for it. She said this is a good idea.
Thank you. Look at everybody collaborating. Um, okay, any other questions? Okay, um, is this, is a, well, we should just do a roll call, bro.
Actually, you're just amending a calendar. It doesn't, we can't do a voice vote.
Was it short, oh, hey. So all those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Great, motion has moved and been approved.
All right, now we are to the greatest part of the evening, which is, uh, coordinated paper and, and all that other good stuff. So, um, because it has been a long meeting, I ask for us to be short, sweet, and to the point, and.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna table mine till the next one.
Oh, okay, so.
I'm gonna set the stage.
Okay, so Counselor Vidal, are you passing on anything that you need to say tonight?
I'm, I'm here, but I'll read it next time.
Okay.
Hopefully, it won't be a, of almost a five-hour meeting next time.
So, Counselor Wilts, do you have anything to add?
Yes.
Go for it.
I am glad that we will be having a meeting to talk about the jail project out in, in, in not just the letter, the actual scope. And, um, because I have no update on, on that, and I know that's how it's working. But, um, I am, I am very uncomfortable, and I've said this, I'll just keep saying the same thing. I'm very uncomfortable with the amount of money that we're budgeting. I'm very uncomfortable with not knowing what the size is of the jail. And, and I'm uncomfortable that there seems to be just repeated calls for change in how we're thinking about funding mental health versus incarceration. And while increasing the Sophia Travis budget is something that is 100% good. I mean, if we can do that, let's do it. It's not funding mental health services. It is not a substitute for doing that. And increasingly, I just, I think we need to take a couple steps back and look at what we're doing. Big picture, um, that's it, thanks.
Appreciate that. Going down the line, Counselor Iverson?
All right, direct defiance, I'm going to talk about four meetings. Oh, the look I just got, Jesus, all right. I will, I will keep this quick. Uh, first of all, I attended the Health Department Board. I'm going to start attending those regularly. I really think, uh, the increased communication between, uh, the Health Department leadership and the liaisons has led to some really positive outcomes. I'm really excited, uh, about, uh, improving that communication, particularly given the way that our granting organizations or departments are now up against it with the grants being pulled back, uh, which means interruption of, of services to Mineral County residents. It stinks. Uh, the second thing, uh, meeting that I went to was, I had a, a coffee with folks from Care Not Cages. And Counselor Member Wilts, you had just talked about some of these things. That conversation had, uh, centered heavily on what exactly are we doing in terms of prevention and treatment, given the fact that if you look at our pop sheets coming out of the jail, it's just, it's a lot of methamphetamine, it's a lot of fentanyl. And we know there's emergent forms of fentanyl out on the street right now. And there's just so much substance use disorder happening right now that it's, it's just, it's, it's amazing to see how much of those pop sheets is taken over, uh, by meth. And I think to Counselor Wilts' point, uh, we are not thinking or talking about a holistic way to address substance use disorder. I will, uh, point out that Centerstone, uh, is, uh, has taken on increased role with their incre, different, with their, um, their funding mechanism has changed, and they're taking on additional counties. I think that's helpful, but there is a gap, and county government can fill that, uh, help fill that gap. And so I was really encouraged by my coffee with the Care Not Cages folks, uh, to, to talk about, uh, substance use disorder treatment. The third meeting I attended was the CIB. Uh, I was, that was such a great meeting, uh, where they announced that the different bids that gone out were awarded, uh, to labor organizations. About half of the bids were awarded to labor organizations. That is fantastic. I grew up in a labor household. We need to be using, uh, our, our brothers and sisters in labor to be building these projects, whether it's the convention center, whether it's the jail, whether it's anything related to county government. We need to be reducing barriers to labor, being able to bid for these contracts. We saw it happen with the convention center. Huge thumbs up. Local businesses were also chosen, uh, I think that's great. And then we just got an email today that demolition of the old Napa building is happening tomorrow at 8:00 AM. So as you're driving around downtown, uh, they're going to be closing off lanes. They've already started closing off lanes. Slow down and give the workers a break, uh, because, as I just iterated, the folks out there doing the work are local and they're labor, so give them a break. Uh, the third and, or the fourth and final meeting that I attended was a substance use disorder de-stigma and Narcan training event at St. Thomas Lutheran Church. That was fantastic, uh, to talk about ways that, uh, faith communities can play an active role in talking about de-stigmatizing harm reduction, which includes needle exchanges and things like that that's happening in this community. Uh, and so, uh, it's really great to see that, uh, houses of worship are going to be stocking Narcan in public places so that as you walk in, uh, to these, these places, that it, it does portray the fact that we are a welcoming community, uh, and that we see substance use disorder as, uh, as something that's not a choice. Uh, the next training will be on trauma-informed care. Uh, that's going to be on August 3rd at 1:30 PM, again, at St. Thomas Lutheran Church. So lots of good things happening in the community. This is a great community to be a part of, and, uh, those are my meetings.
I clarified the labor organization phrase, because the contracts were not awarded to the labor organization. They were awarded to labor representative workplaces.
I stand corrected. You are entirely correct, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Yep. Great.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just a few notes for this evening. I, I want to reflect a little on, um, I, I, Counselor Wilson's comments about the, the Justice Center facility. I, I, and I know that maybe there's some frustration when we go really long in a meeting and we're kind of driving toward transparent conversations. I'm tired, but I'm, I am also thankful for the work we put in on this letter second round. We have to have these conversations out loud. Um, we, we need things, uh, brought into this fishbowl and not kind of revealed. And I agree with the counselor that I feel like, once we get a better accounting of things, this will help with a lot of the questions we're, we're hearing. So thank you for that patience with everybody, but that's, that's what we signed up to do around here. In terms of, uh, other transparency, I think it's, I want to pick up on Counselor Iverson's comment about the, the Board of Health. And I agree that, um, I think we've hit some breakthroughs on how we're communicating, getting a good information out of the Board of Health. And I do look forward to the Board of Health's, uh, final conclusion and public reporting on the closure of the Futures Clinic that they've obligated to us. One of the outputs of that meeting that, uh, Counselor Iverson, Counselor Crossley and I were able to attend was, uh, a way to receive that report at some point. And I think we need to bring to council, um, an idea about if we need kind of a fiscal oversight committee or something to catch reports from groups that are kind of telling us that things that went wrong and how we're going to improve them. Uh, so, and also, uh, and, and provide an opportunity for us to conduct that work of transparency and oversight in other parts of government. I pivot to say this, um, and it brings me no joy that we are at the one year and one week mark uh, since the county government had to close for a week due to a cybersecurity incident a year ago. It's another report we've never seen, uh, and I've requested that documentation frequently since sitting in this chair. And we've yet to have a public accounting of that. When we look across the street on Indiana Avenue and know that the university went through something very similar, um, and had their consequences, um, there are some real-world consequences for our staff in the county, and I want to say them out loud. You know, one is that, um, with that incident, we never really had a teleworking policy after that for our knowledge workers, which meant that if it's a benefit to our community or is it HR practice to have teleworking as an opportunity for some of our departments, that hasn't been on the table since that incident occurred. It was basically a return to work policy six months before the federal government. We need to be more accountable to our workforce and what happened there. Secondly, is the decision-making that went into that. It's not whether or not the insurance company wants to share details. It's how did we get to a conclusion that we've closed the government for a cyber incident or a loss of Wi-Fi? What is the impact on the Board of Judges, on people waiting trial, on the backlog that occurs every time we do that? We need to have that reporting as well. We need to have an ability to catch it and, and surface it. It's not trying to catch people doing stuff wrong, it's just good government, to govern transparently. And I look forward to continuing to make a case to get the full accounting on what happened a year ago. We really need to know this in the community. Um, on some positive notes, um, I did meet with United Way and Habitat for Humanity last, uh, this past week with Commissioner Madeira.
Um, on some positive notes, um, I did meet with United Way and Habitat for Humanity last, uh, this past week with Commissioner Madeira. As they've been carrying the water on the last tornado victims. Uh, this is still a story going on in our community. Of the twenty-two people who were unhoused due to the tornado, four are only in permanent housing at this point, and five were made homeless. And we don't really have a plan for when people become homeless due to disaster in the community. Uh, groups like Heading Home have done great work on how to think through. Uh, homelessness planning in the community, but this niche thing, where we suffered an acute incident that has left people still stranded months beyond. Um, has fallen to our social service community to answer. I've, of course, encouraged them to apply for Sophia Travis. But that's not an answer for when we see something, hopefully not of the size of a Texas-type disaster in our community. Um, the good news is that the United Way Habitat, Commissioner, um, the Mckinburn County EMA. Uh, the Health Department, myself, have committed to forming a long-term recovery group, which is really the, the last step in a disaster like this. It's informal for this one, but it's something we're gonna have to learn from to prepare for the next one. So I think that's a good step forward. There's more information coming out on that. Lastly, is, um, maybe just to end on an absolute positive note. Last week I had a chance to attend WFHB's fiftieth anniversary. Uh, Gala Event at the Bluebird. It was during the day, which I've never been at the Bluebird during sunlight before. Uh, that was kind of entertaining, but it was really great to see people who have been involved with WFHB going back fifty years, um, in the community. Uh, gathering for concert there, led by former city council member Steve Volan as his emcee. And they too, as an independent media, have suffered huge cuts from the federal government and are also on the ropes as our public broadcasting is in the community. Um, and so, I mean, if you're somebody that turns into independent radio, if you're getting your Democracy Now! broadcast there, if you're listening to all the great community programming. Uh, they need our help just as well. But it was a really great evening, um, with Spot the Dog and, uh, all the good stuff at the firehouse, so. Um, it's also a good example of what Bloomington really is. Uh, you can't pay a consultant to brand a community when you have, uh. Uh, uh, institution like WFHB out there really defining what our community is, and it's a good example, one of many. But that's my comments tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
I'm not speechless often, but that, okay.
I just like the.
I mean, you just, you, you did it, and as the, the kids say, you read it. Um, okay, um, last but not least, I just wanted to, also, just as a welcome. Boy, was this a good meeting for your first meeting. Our council administrator assistant, like, was, welcome to the team. We appreciate you. You are learning a lot. You learned a lot tonight. Expect more of it, so welcome.
Maybe in smaller doses most of the time.
But it's okay. This is a good time for all the learning, so we appreciate that. Um, Counselor Iberston and I met, um, with the Commissioner's Office to go over budget, speaking of budget. Um, and so that was one thing you did not mention. Um, secondly, the other, um, uh, budget that I, um, budget, or departmental budget. Update that I met with was the auditor. Um, and so we went over, uh, went, uh, ch- or got a chance to go over her budget as well. Um, and so looking forward to, you know, budget season again that is upon us. Again, we had, a- and as people know, and, and I've said this to a couple of people before. Cause I know people are like, what are y'all doodling when people are coming up for public comment? I counted thirteen people that came in for public comment today. And I have every last one of the public commenter's name. And so all the way down from the very first person that came in to the very last person. Um, that was very short and brief and to the point. I just wanna say thank you because whether we agree or just disagree. I've, again, and I said this before a couple of weeks ago, I think there is beauty in listening to problems that the community has. And for us to be active listeners. I always tell my children, I know you hear the words and all the noise that your mother is saying. If y'all are watching this, probably not, but I'm gonna make you watch it later. Um, but, you know, you hear the noise that I'm saying. However, when I, after I hear it, I can do one or two things. Either listen to it and be able to process, or listen to it and just move on. And tonight, all thirteen of y'all that said something to us has been a, a constant thought and a playback in my brain. From the very beginning of this meeting. Um, you know, I know, uh, Care Not Cages, uh, you know, representatives met with us. Uh, individually last week, and I just wanted to be able to say thank y'all for those conversations. And I hope you all heard something from us, and I want you to continue to make sure that, you know, we are listening and to put heat on us. Um, I know as activists, uh, that is your job and that's your role. And again, you know, whether we agree to disagree or not, I think there is things that we heard tonight, and I think we also heard. There is a, you know, there, there's a serious problem when it comes to funding, 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 funding. That is the biggest thing, and we already have seen from federal government all the way down to state. And now we are starting to feel that heat on a local level. And so, community members are starting to really express concern. And it's now the drum that is sounding very loud. And I want us to continue to listen to those things and figure out how we can be the change agents for figuring stuff out in Monroe County. Without having to go to town on, um, you know, rebranding efforts, because I think money can be better used wisely. Um, but that's not my business. My business is Monroe County, and so I, I appreciate that. Um, last thing that I will also say in terms of people that are hurting right now, um, is the fact that. Federal government and state government has also defunded public broadcasting, um, television, which is also known as PBS. I had my Arthur Fist t-shirt on, but was told I should probably change that, so, and you know, I'm glad I did. Um, but I just want y'all to know, like, I stand in solidarity with public broadcasting for a multitude of reasons. That's how I grew up. That's how I was raised. Um, uh, WTTW in Chicago was able to watch, you know, all the, from Julia Childs to. Burton Ernie on Sesame Street and listening to all of those things. And as an adult, as a forty-two-year-old adult, I find myself really aging, um, as you can see all my gray hair. But also, you know, going to watch public broadcasting, and that's something that's near and dear to me personally. Because as, um, I was an intern there, I met a really cute dude that turned out to be my husband, um, in college there. So that has a lot of history, was able to have my first jobs there as, um, a college graduate. And so there are really going to be some consequences from this government and their failure to. Act. Uh, uh, oh, well, they're acting, but that's just not in the way that we should. And so, again, tonight, to me, this means community, 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 and community has given us a lot of food for thought. I appreciate that. We do not have long meetings as often, but when we do, I find that they're meaningful, even if I go home with a splitting headache. Much so as I'm gonna go home tonight with that, but still no longer than the city council. So, with that being said, I appreciate every single person, and that was Shaythra. Um, I appreciate everybody being able to come in, um, appreciate the deadlines and the updates. Oh, and the last thing on a positive note is Taste of Bloomington is coming back. So in about another week, um, from twenty nineteen, the Taste of Bloomington is coming back. So again, participate locally. Hopefully, there is no rain or inclement weather that comes our way. Um, it is going to be extremely warm, so those be paying attention. Um, and I am getting a card. This is breaking news. There is Blink Micro Transit, so it's Blink from the Bloomington Transit. Um, you, it's Bloomington's Transit New Downtown Shuttle Service, so. It does. That's what Counselor Fidel is saying, so, yes.
DBI, uh, Action Group, uh, Downtown Action Group, uh, got to write it. We were out touring downtown. And the Blink thing was going by, and there were, there were four of us, I think. And so we said, are you going back to the convention center? And they said, yes. And so we got on and we got to tour it. And he wrote down all of us and, and got to record our, our usage. So they're interested in getting people on it and using it. There were, I think, four or five other people on there at the time, so it was being used. It was lovely to see.
That's good. And just like that, Blink has come and gone, and just like that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank y'all.